Thank you very much. Good morning, and I'd like to welcome you to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today Wednesday, April 29th. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, I don't believe we had any citizen input, Sharon? Okay, there are no citizen input. We have been hearing from our citizens, but no input for our meeting.
So yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to acknowledge that. Phone calls and emails are coming in. I'm reading them. I've been listening to the phone calls, calling a few people back, and responding to emails for that personal connection. So I'm sure we're all in that spot, so we're getting lots of citizen input, just not specifically at the head of this meeting.
And I'll just add on to that, that what's interesting is how divided the input is. There's people that think we need to open their economy back up as soon as possible, and there's people that don't think we should do anything different, and it's very interesting. I think it's the most divided I've seen, so.
Okay. Yes, I will concur with that comment, and I do want to mention that yesterday, we were on a call with the governor, and my question actually was asked, it wasn't identified, but it was asked, about the 1.62 billion federal funds that have gone to the state, to our governor, and accordingly to the four-page rules that we've analyzed and we are looking at currently, some of those funds should be definitely going to Deschutes County for some of our expenses for the COVID. We have incurred costs. It does not reimburse us for revenue, which we will not earn, but it does say that expenses will be covered. So the governor, in her response, was that she was going to be studying it for the next couple of days. So I am really hoping that she'll come to the same conclusion that I reach when I read the document, that Deschutes County clearly should be reimbursed, and the funds should come, they've come from the federal government, they've gone to the state to Salem, and now they need to come to Bend. So, thank you very much.
Well, yeah, I'll add on to that, too, because that was shared by Congressman Walden's Assistant, Nick Strater, the actual rules. He literally sent the rules to me, which then you were able to print them out, and we all have them today. But he's maintained that throughout the entire thing, whereas the governor, both yesterday and last Monday, said the same thing, that she's going to read the rules. Well, the rules have been, these rules, for at least that long a time, so it's very discouraging that that hasn't been their interpretation, and hopefully it will be. The other thing, mentioning questions, I had also asked a question that didn't get read, which was, who is it that's going to decide whether we've met the downward trajectory for the gating? And that didn't get asked also. I was wondering if she was, or the Oregon Health Authority. I mean, we've heard people in our audience conjecture, but I wanted to ask the governor that, and it didn't get asked. It's too bad, but we texted it through Sharon, so I'm not sure why they didn't read it.
Thank you. Yes, so definitely, I think that message needs to reach Salem, that that money is not all for Salem, and it's definitely not all for Portland, just because they have their over 500,000. The entire state has experience costs involved with COVID-19. So thank you very much for including that. We do have a consent agenda?
Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
About yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much. We now need to reconvene as the body of the Sun River Service District at this moment.
So we have an appointment for Mark Murray to the Sun River Service District Managing Board, so I'll move approval, board signature of that appointment.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you very much on that. Now, we need to close that, close the Sun River Service District, and now we're going to reconvene as the governing body for Deschutes County. And on our docket now is our signature. Eric, would you like to proceed?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. I'm here to discuss a draft update to the Grant Application and Administration Policy, which is GA 20. As background, a couple of months ago, although it seems like years ago, we came to the board with a draft update to this policy. The draft update at the time made substantial changes to the policy, mainly that grants that were under $150,000 could be applied for and received administratively without the board's approval. At the time, the board did not want to make that change. The board wanted to keep the current practice where any grant, regardless of the dollar amount, the approval to apply for the grant and receive it comes to the board. So the board wanted to maintain that requirement. So we went back to the drawing board, and before you this morning is a draft update that mainly makes minor changes and more reflects our current practices, and I'm happy to walk the board through the changes to the draft policy. The first change is just in the first paragraph. It just talks about, adds the word "approved" to the process when referring to grants. The next change is under definitions. The proposed change removes the term "county grant writer." We used to have a position that was a county grant writer, and that went away a number of years ago, so the proposed change deletes that position. The next change is under definitions of grant administrator, just clarifies that the person assigned to the grant is really from the department that hosts the grant. Under policies and procedures, under Section 1, there's an attached grant application template that we've added to the policy. Many times departments would come to the board with a grant application or even the approval, and the board had questions about the budget, the number of FTEs, whether or not the positions were limited duration or regular. So the draft template is intended to prompt the department to provide all of that information that is important in reviewing the grants. Under Section 2, there's deletion that talks about a tracking system. A number of years ago, we looked at kind of doing a centralized tracking system of grants. That never occurred, so we're proposing to delete that reference.
I'd like to say some words about that real quick. So the Audit Committee, which we get to be part of, and we have an audit committee and an internal auditor, in our annual, consolidated annual financial report, the CAFR, that was one point that was just a recommendation, saying that we need to make sure that when we apply for a grant, we implement the grant with the correct overhead administration, FTE, and deliverables, and then we close the grant. So officially, so that was the idea of having this system in place. Right now, our finance group has evolved and automated a lot, so it's kind of built into our systems instead of not tracking this. It's inherent in what we do. So just acknowledging, that's been a discussion at our Audit Committee over the years, and instead of having a separate system, it's basically built into our policies and procedures. And I think department heads understand that. We know we need to close the loop on any commitments we make when we take grant money.
Okay, but I do remember a veterans' grant for a small amount of money, but we had not applied, and received an email on it, and thank goodness, we hadn't met the deadline yet. So sometimes even systems are not perfect, even though you think they might be. So, yeah.
Well, you know, it's interesting. I mean, there was one thing that I picked up on the changes that we made, that it seemed like it was a good idea. It would be a good idea to be able to look and see, we often have to explain how things get financed, and to have grants by department on a list would be an interesting, I mean, it seems like it was a good basis for asking for it.
Oh, yeah. Well, as I say, I think we could ask for that from finance.
The other option is, as you know, legal has been exploring, looking at tracking agreements, contracts. And I could talk to County Council Dave Doyle and see if grants could be part of that, because the grants really do come through the same process in terms of, they're assigned a document number, they go through a legal review process before it comes to the board. So that's a possibility.
The only thing is, I think the reason we're looking at having the legal look at contracts is really to see if we're meeting the provisions of things and seeing how that's going. This is really sources of funding. So to me, this is more of a finance thing than it is a legal thing, is just knowing where we get all of our money, because even with looking at our budgets after multiple years here, it's hard to sometime remember what all the different categories are in our budgets. So that would, I would support finance doing it more than legal.
Well, legal is offering kind of that date popping up, saying the requirement was to do this, and confirming it's done from a contractual point of view. So, yeah, I mean, I think.
We could explore both options.
Finance does make more sense.
So for this document, I support the words here. It's just the reason behind this and what was in there.
Thank you. The next change is in Section 3, just minor changes where, rather than doing it at the time of the notice of award, the requesting department should assign a grant administrator Section 5 clarifies that when people apply for a grant, they should include, request include a document number from administrative services. And then there's deletion of kind of an outdated term. Section 6 clarifies, many times departments would actually come to the board, up to three times. They would come to the board to get approval to apply for the grant, then they would come back to the board in a work session to get approval to receive the grant, but they wouldn't recognize or realize that many times they need to do a budget adjustment to receive the revenue, or to receive the revenue and to increase the expenditure line item. So they would come back a third time to the board for a budget adjustment. So we're hoping to clarify that departments can just come to the board once for approval, and then, once they receive the grant, they can come back to the board for approval with a budget adjustment. And that also helps with keeping finance in the loop. Next change is at 7. Really, what 7 does is it takes item number 9 down below, and you can see that crossed out, and moves that up. It just seems to fit better there. And that talks about what information finance needs in terms of the funding source, the amount expected, so that they can enter the grant into the system. And that concludes the proposed changes to the grant policy.
You need to change item 10, then, and make it a 9?
Yes, we'll do that.
With that change, I'd move approval of County Administrator's signature on grant application administration policy, GA 20.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now ready for our COVID-19 update, and I believe, Nathan, you have a few minutes. It's now 10:17. I recognize that you are, needed to be done by 10:30. So, do you want to let us know where we're at? Is he on? Okay. Nathan, we believe you're on. Do you want to hit?
Hi there. Good morning. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties. I had to run and get somebody at the door, so I apologize.
That's fine.
So I don't, I missed the, if you had a question specifically of me, but I do need to get off the phone or off the call in about 10 minutes so that I can attend another.
Yes, that's why we have you first on our agenda. We wanted to know if you had any updated material for us?
No major updates. I believe Administrator Anderson is going to cover the board order related to non-congrat at Houghton. I could provide some context for that, if that's appreciated by you or.
That's our second item. Is there something you would want to provide?
Question. So, Nathan, this is Commissioner DeBonne. Question, yesterday, our document talks about the ventilators, the mobile ventilators and ICU-type ventilators. Are those all kind of received in hand?
No, still, no, we still have not received those. I think it's a case of manufacturers potentially over-promising and under-delivering, to be a constant theme.
Yep. So just, our document mentions them, so that's going to be just kind of an action item, when they're received.
Yes.
So we know that. And then also, other PPE orders? I know we were standing by for something last week, and expected delivery dates. Is there anything that has been received this week?
We did receive a pretty large order on Monday of can 95s, which are typically not medical-grade, but they are comparable to an N95, and we've actually, we received 17,000 of those, and we've disseminated a large number, majority of those already this week to partner agencies.
Right.
And we're supposed to receive a shipment, matter of fact, it's actually shipping out of Tacoma. We're receiving 10,000 N95s on Friday. So that's, and then I believe we're supposed to expect, or we're expecting another shipment in the next week or so after that. And that, we're also receiving items every few days from the state.
Good. Yeah.
So have you done an update, then, since the last spreadsheet you gave us, which was the Friday before last, I think?
Yes. Do we have an inventory up today?
So our inventory today, as of right now, looks, as of last night, we're sitting at 13,000 N95 masks, and then we have, it looks like about 2,350 of the can 95s left of what we received this week. Those are the two hot-button items, except we are really a shortage of gowns is probably the most significant struggle at this point, is getting gowns. So we are working with some partners in other counties that have developed a pattern, and we're looking at maybe even sourcing some production of those, but we'll.
So what is our gown number, then?
1,636.
Okay.
Do you have a goal on, I mean, like you just went through things, you're thinking you're going to get in the next, I don't know, five to 10 days? Is there a goal in each of these categories?
Well, we're kind of balancing, we're still in that response mode versus a preparedness mode. So from a preparedness standpoint, we have, we'd like to have a significant cache of N95s, gowns, and a few other items, but those are the two most important. But at this point, we're still disseminating products, so it's kind of hard to quote-unquote "stockpile," because it's important to be able to have that ability to disseminate to partner agencies and critical healthcare services.
So Nathan, how many face shields do we have, then, currently?
We are sitting at five, a little about, about 5,500.
Okay, and then the gloves, the nitro gloves?
71,790 gloves.
Okay.
So Nathan, you'll remember, a couple weeks ago, on a Wednesday meeting, I asked you, you know, what's a lot and what's a little, and I still kind of, I guess that's what I'm going with, this targeting thing. We can read these numbers, and 71,000 pairs of gloves sounds like a lot to me. I don't know if our goal is 150, or our goal is 35. And so, are we just getting as much as we can where we can? Or, I mean, you said we've had to spend sometimes as much as five times as much as normal to buy things. Just kind of, can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, we're not, you know, we're not just spending wildly. Ultimately, and so this is, we're confirming this calculations through, again, but, you know, looking at our, so in, and this is in context of the governor's initial guidelines of reopening, to be able to certify, we have adequate PPE on stock for first responders, because that's what the guidance indicated. We took some calculations based on surge needs from Redmond Fire and Rescue, extrapolated what percentage of EMS calls they run, and kind of applied to a, countywide, to fire EMS agencies, and then we added, we added about, added a certain amount for law enforcement agencies based on a, related to masks, of two masks per officer per day. And so at 90 days, we would be sitting in the category, we'd be right around 30,000 to 31,000 N95 masks that we would like to have on hand. That provides a 90-day surge capacity. So if we get into a situation where we had been the last few months, supply chain is not keeping up with demand, that that would allow us to basically be the insurance policy for our first responder agencies, and not be in a situation where we're providing inadequate PPE to first responders.
So I know you have limited time, so if we, after this meeting, ask you what the targets were for each of these, we could fill that out probably for a 90-day supply?
Yeah, I can give you, and again, this is subject to some refinement, but I would say somewhere in the category about 30,000 gowns, 90,000 gloves.
30,000? You said 3,000, 000?
Yes.
And we're at 1,600?
Yeah. And again, that's, EMS uses a lot of gowns. Now, this is, again, the insurance policy. This isn't the, this isn't necessarily taking into consideration what EMS agencies already have in stock, but I can say that gowns are a item to procure.
I know in Washington State that prisoners were actually sewing gowns.
So.
I had heard that it was going to be implemented in Oregon, but I don't know. Doesn't sound like it.
So what about gloves? What's your goal there?
We're sitting pretty good in gloves. Gloves aren't, don't seem to be an issue to procure, so we're, we'd like 86,000 pairs of gloves on hand, I think is the number. And then surgical masks, we're in really good shape. We have probably a good ability to meet that demand, so.
You just cut out on that number. We couldn't hear it.
Surgical masks, we probably, you know, the EMS use of surgical masks is much less than healthcare, so that's a lower amount. But we're, we project that we should have at least 10,000 or 11,000 surgical masks on hand, and we already have that on hand. So surgical masks don't appear to be a problem.
Nathan, the gloves number cut out. Did you say 90,000 or 86,000?
About 90,000 gloves, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard originally.
And then, the other thing, I was wondering, so this is what the Emergency Operations Center has, I guess. Don't the fire and EMS have their own stockpile? Doesn't law enforcement have its own stockpile? And how do you figure that in?
So, yeah. So ideally, what I'd like to be in a position is, is that they have their own supply, and again, our supply is an insurance policy. That allows us a couple things. One, that allows us, in a short-term surge situation, to provide necessary PPE for an alternate care site, for example, but it also would allow us to bridge supplies for other critical services in the event of a surge. That is, the challenge with managing other agencies' PPE inventories is, we have no control over it. So from an emergency management standpoint, I'm not comfortable certifying we have adequate PPE unless we have.
Yeah. I guess my question really was, do you have the numbers of what the various agencies have? So when you're creating your insurance policy, you know if Ben Fire has 5,000 or 50,000 masks, and whether, I mean, it seems like you have to know the base to know what you're insuring.
Yes, we get that information through a burn rate calculator, that they're submitting information to the state. I got a report last night, but I haven't been able to manipulate.
Well, burn rate is the rate that they go through it. That doesn't say how much is stockpiled. Are they telling you how much they've stockpiled?
So they're, the burn rate calculator takes a snapshot of inventory, and that, although is not how I would calculate burn rate, that is how the calculator's being implemented. So that's probably our most accurate way of seeing snapshots of inventory from agencies.
So as a Board of Commissioners, I would suggest that somehow we have this discussion. Commissioner Henderson, we kind of go down this path each time about, you know, back and forth. How could we just modularize this and have a line item on our budget?
Well, I'll tell you how, real simply, we just get the answers that we've asked, and it's real simple, and that's all we're doing. And so I'm not, I don't really think, I was sitting here thinking this, this is just what you would ask. If you're saying you need this many deals, are you taking into consideration what they already have? Do you find out what they have? It's the same thing we asked about the hospital.
Well, we've done this three times here. I'm just acknowledging this could be done offline.
We could do it independently this meeting.
Yes, that's what I'm like.
But it isn't wrong to ask.
I was interested in knowing, was there a delivery recently, which is good to know, because that's the supply chain? So, yeah, I'm just saying. Now, we've done this for 10 minutes again. It's very frustrating.
We'll solve it, then.
Right.
I don't have those questions.
No, the answer, we want the answer.
I just want the answer, yes.
We have the question. We, you know, we'd like to know, what is the goal?
Well, we're going to.
It's real simple, we have what we have. What is actually the goal for Deschutes County?
And we're going to have to certify to the state with our application to reopen, that we have enough. So if our name is going to be on that, how do we know that? What's been the basis of creating that enough? So if you don't care about it, that's fine. I do, and I believe.
Oh, see, that, no, and as a Board of Commissioners, setting a vision for what we want to have done, making sure we have buy-in from our partners, which is going to be the health department and the hospital system. This is emergency management, and emergency management's going to be, need to be able to give confidence to the agencies that are the first responders in the healthcare system to be able to say, yes, we have the appropriate supply. That's all the answer we need up here at this front desk. So I'm just saying, since we've done this three times, it's awkward.
Well, I don't see us as an governing organization. I see us as a governing body, which is what the Deschutes County Code sets it up at. So if we're a responsible governing organization, I believe we do get into these numbers. It could be easily supplied to us. We've asked it before. It could be easily supplied offline, and so it's not, but it shouldn't be surprising that we're asking it.
Nathan, if you could send us those numbers today later, when you have a moment, the goals, that would be excellent. So we know that the goal is achievable, and we can certify to our state that we are in a position to handle a problem. So thank you. I realize you're probably gone by now, because it's, now it is 10:31. Thanks, Nathan. Dr. Wattenberg, do you want to give us a little bit of an update for the community? And if you can identify yourself, please?
Eric Wattenberg, MD. I was asked to participate one way or the other. I wasn't confident with my ability to get in on this remotely at home, so here I am. I don't know if I have a huge update to present, except that statement was just made, that the hospital and EMS were the agencies of interest in moving forward and getting data as to our preparedness. And I will put it to the Commissioners that I believe that outpatient clinics, as well as EMS, but maybe not even EMS, primarily outpatient clinics, urgent cares, the ER is going to see this as well, if there is a surge, and that will remain to be seen, that outpatient clinics are probably the first place you're going to see this, because the hospital has told everybody, do not come to the hospital. If you are sick, please call your primary care doctor. Urgent care clinics have always been there for these people, and if such outpatient clinics as my own, Urgent Care Your Care LLC and Redmond, are not part of this surveillance network, keeping an eye on whether the numbers are ticking up or not, then you're going to miss it by the time the people end up in the hospital and need ICU care. And I've been trying to encourage all of the authorities to make sure we are in the loop and asking, being asked those numbers, what are we seeing? I will guarantee you, I put down good money, that outpatient clinics will be the first place to see your surge in the fall. My second concern is opening the economy for all of the obvious reasons, but the medically pertinent issue is, if we do not allow COVID to circulate as it's going to do, as any virus. viral infection does, if we artificially suppress that circulation in society in general, we may very well see that spike in the winter or the fall. And do we want that to hit precisely when the flu hits? We know flu is going to come around. All of the evidence shows COVID, if you listen to every expert, there's this huge fear that COVID is going to spike again in the fall. Whether it does or not, we are now at the point, speaking nationwide, there are some antibody studies being done, and there are numbers being kicked around about the prevalence of COVID in society that we just didn't know about. And I heard some numbers the other day, 10% or 12% of the people that were tested, tested positive for COVID antibodies and had been completely asymptomatic. There was a study that came out of a few prison systems, I don't know where they were, but the numbers, they had tested about 3,000 people. 95% of those inmates tested positive and had been totally asymptomatic from this. So I think the writing is on the wall where we're headed, is that we do need to open up our society, allow this to circulate gently but consistently, and frankly, just get it over with. It is going to go around, and how do we want it to go around, under what circumstances? And my concern is, we're not moving fast enough to allow that to happen, particularly in rural areas such as Oregon, central and eastern Oregon, where the numbers just don't justify the total shutdown that we have been undertaking. Now, I, I get it from a statewide and a nationwide standpoint, how do you limit movement of people on a county-by-county basis? It's much easier to do it nationwide and statewide, but when you boil it down to east versus west half of Oregon, do we stop everybody at the pass? And, you know, it wouldn't really be all that difficult to do, to tell you the truth. There's only about three ways to get into central Oregon from the west side of the slope. Call out the National Guard if you need to. I don't know if all this needs to be, you know, publicly acknowledged, but at some point, we do need to move forward. My concern is, we are going to drag our feet with this and be afraid of what might happen. Yes, it will cause more positive cases, and as testing expands, we are going to see a dramatic rise in the number of positive cases. But are we going to see a dramatic rise in the hard number, which is deaths and disability from this? We can measure those very directly. All of those are being reported, and we just have not seen that in Oregon. Oregon is way at the bottom from a nationwide standpoint of cases and deaths. The deaths you can't lie about, and those are consistent with the positive number of cases that we are seeing. So when you look at that, Oregon is way, way at the bottom, way below some of the other states that are already opening their economies. So from a medical professional standpoint, I can see no justification in, in dragging this on much longer. Now, a lot of my medical colleagues will take direct issue with me, they have for the last month and a half. They're saying, how can you, Dr. Wattenberg is a medical professional, endorse not being as strict with this as we can? But this is something we do in healthcare all the time. We weigh the benefits on many different levels, and the risks and the costs, so.
Well, Dr. Wattenberg, appreciate you being here today. Is there a, a roundtable or, or meetings with your colleagues where this is talked about as a group, to try to come to some kind of consensus on that?
Not that I'm aware, and I've not been invited to any, except that there are, in fact, I think one's going on today. I think it's this afternoon with the Ben Chamber, if I'm correct, and they have a, what do they call it, a sector within the Ben Chamber pertaining to healthcare, and I think they have a meeting dedicated to that. They had a, a more general-purpose meeting last Friday, which I was in on and was not aware that that was really more, you know, a business and a Ben Chamber, you know, business kind of meeting. So there are certain focus groups, yes. The EOC has had a few online meetings, but, you know, invitations to these, and I'm not sure exactly what type of association or meeting you're referring to, but...
Well, so when I look at this, and the more we deal with it as a public policy, you could do a whiteboard where, and divide it in the middle, and you say, on one side is stopping the COVID-19, and on the other side is every other impact we've had from doing the strategies we've done. We could start with, you know, we saw an article yesterday in the paper about increased domestic violence. There's an article about less education. There's an article, I mean, if you just take the headlines out of the bulletin over the last three weeks, you can see all the different negatives. There's other health, you know, risks which, you know, have, are finally getting, but it's, but that public policy issue to me is also, on top of the fact that maybe the best way to deal with it for future is get it more in the community, like you're saying, but then there's a second health aspect of what other health factors are at risk, you know, clinical depression or suicide, or just all those kinds of things. I just wonder if doctors feel comfortable talking about that policy.
And don't forget about alcoholism. What have we done for alcoholism the last six weeks? So...
My impression is doctors are very hesitant to stick their neck out and advocate for anything other than absolute certainty with this, and we don't have certainty with COVID. We are going to have to use judgment here and be vigilant. This is not to say we can't back up and become more restrictive if we see a definite spike in cases and hospitalizations and deaths. The evidence just doesn't show that's going to happen, particularly in rural, sparsely populated areas. You know, some of the other states on the eastern seaboard are seeing a peak. I mean, the biggest headlines right now is Florida had its most deadly day yesterday, or whichever day it was. You are going to see a spike in those as time goes on, particularly in places that haven't seen big numbers yet. It's going to be very difficult and uncomfortable for everybody involved to come to a consensus and a decision to do anything different than we're doing right now, because when you're doing everything you can, nobody can fault you for it as far as the way things are going with the illness. But if we back off and numbers do tick up, somebody's gonna want to point the finger and lay the blame on somebody, and who is that going to be? And frankly, I don't think most people in leadership positions are comfortable doing that. It, it's much easier to be very conservative and justify your behavior based on that. Very few people can find fault until you get outside of the individual numbers of cases and look at the economy and everything else that goes with it. But any good doctor has always looked at, you know, the broader context of a medical decision. What does it mean for their lifestyle? What does it mean for their pocketbook? What does it mean for their family? Doctors do this all the time, but in cases like this, they're not going to be comfortable sticking their neck out. And when they do, you've seen it on, on social media, they get crucified every time they try to speak up and say something.
Or they get taken down by Facebook, or Google, or YouTube, or whomever. So, yes, we do see that.
I have a question. So you mentioned, you know, pardon, being part of the surveillance network and, you know, outpatient clinics are gonna be the, you know, partners in this whole thing. So I, and I agree with that. But, so we have infectious disease notification system. I mean, I, don't you have a board with the latest updates from county health or whatever it is, and, you know, required reporting for infectious diseases? So I'm just saying, that's, that's a system that's in place, it's been in place for 100 years probably.
And it's, it's going gangbusters right now. I've never seen any disease reported like COVID. It, the biggest glaring omission with all of this is why has the state never done this for the flu? The state overtly makes a statement on our website, we do not track deaths due to flu because we don't know how to do it. Well...
Now it's being done.
And all of a sudden, within two months, it, these, these, these dashboards pop up on the internet, giving you, you know, second by second death rates in the nation for COVID. Why has that never been there for the flu? I'm not saying this is like the flu, but what made this, what, what, what made COVID all of a sudden be so serious that we had to go to this extent? It's good that we did, but why haven't we been doing it for 20 years?
We've had these systems in place that kind of antiquated, here's a memo on the fax machine, put it up on the board, correct? I mean, you, you kind of need to be up as a provider, up to speed on what infectious disease information's coming out of the state or the county department.
That's what these, that's what these dashboards that you're seeing.
And now we've totally automated in a short period of time. That's good information, yeah.
We, we've never known this for flu or any other infectious disease. It's good. If we can do that for COVID, why can't we do it for all of them? I have my theories as to why you don't see that kind of activity, or you haven't seen it in the past. Now that, this, this cat's out of the box now, so what's gonna happen this winter with the flu?
Well, and, I mean, society, was society asking for that? I mean, I, I've never been an adult thinking, man, I wish I knew the flu numbers this year. You hear them once in a while, but I've never yearned for them, you know?
We've tried this several times with the, the first SARS outbreak and MERS. It, it fizzled quick enough that it never got traction.
Yeah, interesting. Thank you.
Well, when 79,400 people died of the flu in the winter of 2017, 18, and no one was really talking about it, and it was, they were talking about the 70,000 opiate overdoses. So I knew that number, and I do believe that the state recognized a lot of older people died, and so it seems like it must have come in at that time that the state implemented the healthcare community education for taking care of our nursing homes, because I'm really proud of our local nursing, nursing homes, the 33 of them. They, they've been doing an excellent job for those most vulnerable in our community. So it had, when you look at it up...
We have no deaths in, deaths in Deschutes County yet, so, yeah.
Right. So Dr. Seidlinger, the epidemiologist from the state, in the middle-of-March bulletin, said he expected Oregon to have 75,000 cases mid-May. So now we're looking at a little less than 2,400 cases, and as you say, it's really important to focus on those 99 deaths for the entire state, so, and zero deaths in Deschutes County, and only one death on this side of the mountain. So, yeah, it's, it's rural Oregon, we're, we're a little bit more rural here.
And we're fortunate.
Yes, we are very lucky. We have blue skies, clean air.
And space.
Mr. Henderson, did you want to add anything?
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for coming today.
Commissioner DeBona, you said one thing, though, a surveillance network. There is not a good one in place, particularly for day-to-day activity, for cases of much of anything besides what we are required to report, and that would be infectious disease.
Yeah, I'm...
And positive cases.
And it's evolving quickly now.
I will ask a follow-up question. We, we had a discussion yesterday on this, when we were working on this plan for, to present to the governor to reopen parts of our economy, and it came up whether or not we would be able to identify the testing capacity of all the individual clinics, and whether or not they would provide that information if we asked, and, and I think you were one of the people that said, well, why don't you do, ask them to do it anonymously, which I, I'm fine with, if we have clinic number one, two, three, four, and we just have the numbers. Have you talked about that with any other clinics, or you just, or you remain confident that that would work?
I can only speak for our own clinic, and we would be happy, you know, with a phone call or ability to do it online, to tell you what our testing supply capacity is, what our PPE capacity is, what our stocks are. The only way I can see that this will be very useful would be to gauge that against what our everyday baseline usage is, and if there was a surge of 50 or 100% use in PPE, would we have enough on hand, and what would our supply be? But I think going forward, as I see it, that is the ultimate question that needs to be answered to get past these gating criteria, besides the number of cases. And in Deschutes County, on that, on that note, one or two cases a day here looks like a spike, because we've only had 75 cases. So if we have a few days with no cases, and then we have a few days where we report a few cases, it looks like a huge spike when you graph it out. We're gonna have to use different criteria for defining whether we are having a decreasing incidence or a spike in the number of cases. How are we gonna define that? I don't think we can do it day by day, because the numbers just aren't big enough. But back to the PPE, we'd be happy to give a report as often as it was requested. I don't know about every other clinic, but I think we're all in this together, and of the six or eight entities that have been on these phone calls or internet meetings, every one of them's very interested in participating in this.
Have you done more testing recently?
Not, not any more than we had been over the last month, so. They, the cases that need to be treated are just trickling in little by little. When we have a good test for antibody test, to go look at whether people have been exposed, that may change, but then we're gonna have to be careful, do we just offer those to anybody and everybody who wants to know if they were ever exposed? Eventually, that will be the point we need to get to. We need to know what the background of this is.
But we don't have that test yet.
There is a test out there. The consensus on one of the meetings last week was that it's not ready for primetime.
Okay. Per the last 49 days of our reporting, we've had three days with five positives, four days with four positives, and four days with three, and the rest of the days have been one, two, or zero. So, yeah, it's, you know, it really, it goes up to 75, but when you look at how many it is a day, it's, it's quite manageable.
How are we going to report that back to the state as one of the gating criteria for no increase in rates over a 14-day period?
Right.
It's gonna be difficult when you're talking about, you know, one, two, three, or four cases.
Zero, don't forget zero. So, yeah, it, it does make it very difficult. Thank you so much for joining us today.
My pleasure.
Appreciate. And I do believe you're on early on KBND, so before 7:00, I think, like 6:30? 6:30, yes, that's, I recognize that. Dr. Conway, would you like to join us now?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Let me change screens. I have a couple of things to talk about. I was just looking at the flu and pneumonia surveillance information, death information on the OHA website, as I thought it was here. Happy to share that later. Um, so, two things. You should see a screen now with some text on it, do you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start with just a, a quick graph. As of this morning's report, we still had 75 cases, and this is a cumulative case line. You can see that we still have a substantial upward progress, but the slope has slightly decreased since the sort of heart of our local outbreak, which is the end of March and the beginning of June. And I just want to point out a, a shift that we've seen, which is substantial. We had two distinct waves in the early part of our local epidemic, returning travelers coming from cruise ships and high-risk areas, and then second, their spouses, domestic partner, family contacts. And what we know about these folks is that they probably all had a very high initial exposure, what we would call an inoculum. Since then, we've seen a recent major shift in the age of cases. So prior to the 14th of April, only 11% of our cases were aged 29 or younger. However, in the last two weeks, we've seen a substantial shift in age, so that now 55% over half of our reported cases in Deschutes County have been aged 29 or younger. So this has an impact on contact tracing. Younger adults often have higher numbers of close-peer contacts than older adults, and we're already seeing a much higher named contact number per case. So that's suddenly creating, even though the case numbers in the recent couple of weeks have not gone up substantially, they've continued to, to rise, but the, as far as the rate goes, the burden for case, for case follow-up investigation and contact tracing, and then the requests for isolation and following persons under monitoring has. Those would be the main points I wanted to raise right now. We are...
Are any of those under 29 hospitalized?
I actually don't know. I believe that one was, but I'd have to check. They were ill enough to have been tested, so right now, the, the great majority of testing done is done for clinical illness, typically ILI, influenza-like illness plus fever. So these, these folks were all ill, but I don't know if they're hospitalized. And if they were, I would need to find, I would need to look at the individual cases and see whether or not they had some underlying chronic illness, but I'm, I'm happy to do that and report back.
So you, yeah, you don't know about the chronic illness either, then?
Well, we have, we have that. I don't have it, I actually, actually have it on my computer, but I, I'd need to look at the files that we can't show in public to answer that question, so I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so what is the actual number of the 55%? Do you have that available?
Just one moment.
I, I probably have it in my... I probably have it in my report, my binders. I did see it.
You have this age distribution? Trying to move that data over to different screens so I can look at it anyhow. We do have the distribution, but I don't have it broken down by that cut on that sheet, but I do have it in the database. As I said, we can report back on that. The salient point is that the demography is changing. The initial inoculum, the initial exposure dose is quite likely higher in those first two waves of cases than in the recent past. And the number of household members and contacts that we're having to follow is increasing per case, largely because of the change of demography. So that tends to be people that are younger, working. And then we're adding and going back and reconstructing occupation as well to see if there's occupations that may be particularly at risk, especially in the...
Dr. Conway, one factor to consider is, I think, it used to be a testing criteria that you had to be sixty years old or older. So now people, so there was kind of a discouragement for younger people to be tested, so...
Actually, there was, to my memory, there was no time at which you had to be that age. But that was one of the qualifying risk factors for being tested. So you had to be significantly ill plus fever. So you had to have ILI symptoms plus fever and either shortness of breath or another symptom.
Yeah, I know the tests. I'm just saying it was one of the factors-
You had to be over sixty.
-they included. So it was publicized, and people, I think, identified it as an age-related... The concern was age-related, but we don't need to belabor that today.
Sure. Well, and actually, people that are older do often, A, have underlying chronic diseases, and then, B, people that are much older, especially above seventy-five, do have a higher mortality rate, even if they don't have chronic diseases. That's partially because of waning immunity and partially because of lower respiratory reserves. So that is why they were put as a high priority for testing. However-
Dr. Conway, I just asked the one question, and we do, we have some other questions I think we want to ask if we could interrupt that. We're aware of the fact that age-related aspects.
Yes. Commissioner DeBona, did you have any questions?
So you're talking, Dr. Conway, you're talking about strong or low inoculant. So, you know, originally, it was possible high doses, not knowing what was going on. And now, basically, anybody that's interacting knows to think twice about getting clothes or not wearing a mask. So is there any kind of medical guidance that that's a separation of... I mean, it's got to be good to have low inoculant, obviously.
Sure, sure. So just one other thing I'll add. One of the reasons why we've had relatively high death rates in healthcare providers, even young ones, is because many of them were caring for people that were in ICUs on ventilators, and that produces a very high parasol amount of virus in the air. So those people, many of them acquired a very high dose as well. So we don't know what the actual minimum dose threshold is, but we do know that the more dose you're exposed, more likely your onset of symptoms will be, and the more severe your course of illness is likely to be. So that's one of the bases for making a recommendation for social distancing. The distance that a cough or a sneeze can travel is fairly reliably below two meters or six feet. Wearing masks or any barrier over the face will help contain sneezes and coughs. And there's some discussion right now about people, whether they're vigorously exercising, like running in a public place, should also wear them so that they're not... The exhalation rate, what we call the tidal volume, the amount and volume of air that comes out of them is much higher. And often, there's a little bit of sputum if they're running very hard or just spit, that can come with it, which could be infectious. So that's the basis for social distancing, the basis for asking. And I think as we go forward, wanting to open up, one of the accommodations for the concern to keep and contain transmission would be in all public settings, especially if we're talking about opening up barber shops, salons, when you have, you can't do that from six feet away, close proximity. If the service provider and the client are masked, and there's good hygiene, we believe that that will greatly reduce the risk. The same with people that are at a counter, if the person behind the counter is masked, and if the norm, which is being established very quickly in many European countries, being adopted, the pattern that's been longstanding in East Asia, of people wearing masks if they go into a store and whatnot, if that's established, I think that'll give a real boost to being able to reduce the rate of the distribution. And the whole reason we're doing this is that while the idea of herd immunity is an appealing one, it's a time-tested one, we don't know whether or not having antibody and having had COVID infection will prevent reinfection the way that it does for, like, a single influenza type, et cetera. And we also know that the outcomes-
I think we're all set. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes.
So, yeah, getting that information about a low inoculant, knowing that social distancing and masks, this, basically, we're all looking for the path to and open up our economy in a confident fashion. And so this is good information in support of that, the fact that if we follow these procedures, we can do a little bit more, you know, activity, intermixing and business activity, knowing that this truly is having an effect, a positive slowing the effect. I know that we've already been explained that, you know, letting this go through our society and getting to that herd immunity, but we don't, that is a variable right now. We don't have a feel for what that means with this virus. So we're not, would not suggest that at this time. Herd immunity is a goal.
Well, and if we do find that it confers immunity, and that then antibody testing will become much more important rather than just a scientific survey, then we would be able to issue certificates of immunity and whatnot. But right now, the jury's out about that. There have been people that have been apparently reinfected by the same strain. Those are case series. So as time goes on, and we accumulate more information, we will know that. And if so, then that might involve a real change in strategy, but we're not at that point.
Great. Thank you.
Let's just remind ourselves that the population of Oregon is, what, four-point-one, four-point-two million? And we have ninety-nine deaths. So, you know, let's keep focusing on the positive here.
Sure. Well, I think there's a very positive aspect to this. If you go on the OHA website, or I can circulate it, the Institute for Data Management, which was the consulting group in Puget Sound area that OHA retained, did build the model that Dean Seidlinger was citing.
Model that said we were going to have seventy-five thousand cases in the middle of March or May?
If we did not institute aggressive social distancing measures, such as were outlined in the Imperial College and in other US-based studies, we did institute them. The most recent article from them asks or claims that we've avoided seventy thousand cases and potentially thousands of deaths by the aggressive social distancing.
Okay. Sounds very good. We need, if you have nothing further, we need to go on to our non-congregate housing order.
Sure, sure. And I don't want to stand away that, so I'll...
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Conway. Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. So before you is an order that was prepared by staff at the EOC. Dave Doyle, county council, has gone through it and made some edits. Really, the purpose, the main purpose of this order, other than outlining procedures for non-congregate housing, which is a kind of a fancy way of saying people need to be spread out socially, distanced within a set shelter, that you wouldn't put them, in other words, in a big room together in order to properly quarantine or isolate individuals who are either, you know, have tested positive, whether they're symptomatic or not. And it's primarily aimed at homeless population. The, and frankly, another main purpose of the order is to essentially pre-approve potential reimbursement from the federal government, from FEMA, by sharing this order with them in advance. We haven't done this yet, and work is ongoing on trying to identify locations within our county where this non-congregate housing could be located. Legal has been working with admin and EOC staff to kind of determine what those parameters are for that sheltering. But again, the order now is to outline the reasons for and the need for non-congregate housing, and to have this in place that can be shared with FEMA if we get to the point where this is necessary. And obviously, we haven't had, you know, an immediate need for this yet, but we are, the EOC staff is hoping to put this in place in advance. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
So have we needed a sequester, or housed anybody to date?
My understanding, we have not.
So, and as I, as it was explained to us yesterday, this is essentially renting an entire motel or hotel?
It could. There is, my understanding, and I've been, you know, kind of tangentially involved in these discussions, is that there's concern on the part of hotels that, you know, people who are in quarantine are somehow mixed with their guests that aren't part of this program. So the effort has centered around not necessarily an entire hotel, although that discussion has occurred on some of the smaller ones, but perhaps a, either a wing or a floor of a larger hotel where you can set up some kind of barriers or distancing, where you could keep quarantine and non-quarantine guests of the hotel separate.
Yeah. I understand that. It was explained this yesterday. It was one motel contract we were looking at or something, so maybe I was confused. Are there more than, you know, this has been kind of talked about, but we haven't really been central to the discussion. So is it, do we have identified options currently for a motel that would do this?
I do not believe that there is a contract in place.
I know. I'm saying, do we have possible options? I'm not contracts. I'm not-
Yes.
And how many of those do we have?
I believe, I'm aware of, say, three to five different locations where they have actually advanced to the stage where they're discussing what a purchase agreement or a contract would look like.
And who is advancing that and who's discussing that?
EOC staff is leading the effort. Chris Wyler from Health is the person at the EOC who's been in charge of leading that effort.
And just, so just Chris Wyler and EOC staff? Is that, who would that be, or...?
Honestly, I'm not aware. I'm not sure if Eric is of the folks working with Chris at EOC. But both Dave Doyle and John Larity, as well as Eric and myself, have been involved in some discussions on, again, what the contracting looks like.
And would the cost be a hundred and seventy thousand to us, or would it be one quarter of that under the...
What I was informed is that actually Neighbor Impact has grant funds that would pay for one hundred percent of this. But again, it would be, it would qualify with this order for reimbursement under FEMA if it's needed, and if those expenses are made. So I was told that there would be no county funds that would be, or EOC-designated funds that would be necessary to pay hotels if this were needed, and assuming a contract was put in place.
So are you, how sure are you that? I mean, that-
Well, that's what Chris Wyler told us pretty matter-of-factly.
So why are we, the body that's approving this, if it's really a Neighbor Impact contract to do this or to pay for this?
Well, the EOC part of their role is to kind of coordinate emergency response efforts. This is one. Neighbor Impact would supply both the funding as well as a good share of the staff to monitor. There would be other people involved in the supervision of the population housed there, but it is an EOC function. And EOC is assembling and tracking any costs related, again, for efficiency sake and submitting to FEMA for reimbursement.
What, do you know of, to the date, I meant to ask this when we had other people on the line, but we've heard a lot about that we think there's a risk to the homeless population of the COVID-19. Do you know if we've had any of the seventy-five positives that we've had have been with homeless people and have needed housing of some kind? I mean, we're, because I haven't heard, we haven't, that's not really been reported to us.
Yes.
Somebody's jumping in, that Dr. Conway?
It's George. Yes, there have been no homeless people to dates that have been confirmed positive. There have been some named as contacts which we have followed. And then, actually, the answer to your other question about twenty-nine or under, we have not had hospitalized cases, twenty-nine and under. Thank you. Oh, and the other issue is that the FEMA reimbursement requires the emergency order that's before you in order to be eligible for the reimbursement. And then Neighbor Impact is actually also looking at a separate tranche of housing to house people that are high-risk but not infected. And we could, if needed, house people that are high-risk and not infected unless or until we had, in this hotel, until or unless we had a case. And then we'd have to use the usual isolation practices. Thank you.
So if I understood him correctly, he said none of the seventy-five positives have been homeless individuals. Is that what I heard?
Yes, and no one has been hospitalized under twenty-nine.
So I guess what I'm kind of, the reason I'm asking all these questions is I know early on in Washington State, when the first COVID-19 kind of wave came out with a lot of people, I know the King County executive, I remember when I heard on the radio, had decided they would purchase a hotel. And then there was other, and then I've heard that from other jurisdictions. I just wonder, with us, it seems like we're, I mean, maybe we're waiting for the peak in Deschutes County, but it seems like if it consists with the rest of the country, there's a downward trend. It seems like we're kind of, I guess, we're behind the eight ball for this period if we needed it. So we're just putting, are you saying we're putting this order in place? If there's a surge of large proportions, which we need to put people in in villager housing, we have this in our back pocket? Is that what we're-
Essentially, yes.
Doing? Okay. I wouldn't want to just go rent a motel for three months, you know? And the money, a hundred and seventy thousand a month, is in our plan. It seems like that's a lot of money if we've never even housed one person to commit to. So that's, okay, that's why I ask so many questions, because I really don't know very much about the plan.
Any questions?
No questions. You know, I support the fact that this is a, you know, something that may come up. It's good to know that the scope of what this is, and I noticed it talks about individual, units with individual heating, cooling, ventilation system, you know, so there's some specific requirements about making this a valuable and appropriate setting for people that are, you know, possibly COVID-19 positive. So, and it does expire automatically at the end of public health emergency. That's the way it's written also. So this will go away once we're out of an emergency status or until further notice, is the way it reads. So with that, I'll move board signature of order number 2020-024, a public health emergency order regarding the need for designating existing, well, need for appropriate non-congregate housing and shelter.
So I'm not going to yet second this, because I want to look at, I want to read it with knowing what I now know about it. It seemed when I read it last night that this has stronger language than is currently true. And I'll just give you, so I kind of want to spend a little bit of time to read that personally. that personally. I didn't know what we were doing, but it says, for instance, under whereas the LPA for Deschutes makes these findings. It is currently necessary to establish non-congrat sheltering to address the public health needs of Deschutes County. Well, what we've really heard is it's currently necessary to have the ability to do it if there's a surge. So I think the wording is not actually reflecting the situation. So I guess I'd like to look at this in that light. I don't know if there's other ones.
But in the middle of that page, it does say, whereas large surge in the number of persons with serious infections can compromise the ability of the regional healthcare system to deliver healthcare to the public, and Deschutes County has a significant homeless population in need of non-congrat, congregant shelter. So I know.
Well, is that true? Well, do we, do we know that we have a, we have a large homeless population, but do they all want to be in a non-congregate shelter? I mean, I don't know that. I mean, that's a whole different issue.
If they're positive, will they want to be in it?
Well, they aren't positive.
No, I said if they were positive.
We have not had a positive in two months, we haven't had a positive. So that's my point. Does that reflect what's current today? Or is it, you know, does it reflect what we need to have in it when it comes? But I just, I guess I just feel like these things should reflect the truth of the situation. So that could be in need of non-congregate shelter would be the accurate. So I guess I'll ask Dave if he's on the line, you know, is this the wording that he was given to put in this or is this mandatory wording to be able to qualify for this in three months or?
I am on the line. My understanding from, I guess, Tom through Nathan forwarded it on to me was that these were the magic words that were necessary. Certainly, legal didn't make any independent assessment as to whether those needs exist. That's, that's something I think we refer and rely on the EOC and the others.
If I may, I did talk with Nathan this morning. My understanding, because when he said he'd have to leave, my understanding is that that wording, along with the title emergency order, are all required to be eligible for the FEMA reimbursement. The other thing is that there is a point in time count, and there's also a complicated instrument called the VI SPADA that Neighbor Impact helps administer with HUD, the Housing and Urban Development. And that showed a very acute need for non-congregate housing and a preference for that by many of the homeless people interviewed. The other thing is that we actually haven't done that much cross-sectional testing of homeless. Mosaic Medical, Mosaic Medical has a plan to do that, so we may well detect people that are infected that we were not aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. Actually, the point in time count, were those numbers from 2020 ever released? Have we, have we seen those numbers?
My understanding is that the 2020 was released after the, after the January count, but I don't, I don't.
Have we seen those numbers, Eric?
I haven't, but I could check the Homeless Leadership Coalition website.
Okay.
It typically takes a couple of months.
Right, but that was in January and we're now almost May, so.
They do a preliminary count, and they release a preliminary number, which I did hear about, but then there's an adjudication and a sort of scrubbing of that by HUD, and that typically takes place in the spring, and the final count is released late spring or summer, and that could easily have been filled up now by COVID. So, but Colleen Thomas is very heavily involved. She works for a department, but she's also a co-chair of the Housing Leadership Coalition, Homeless Leadership Coalition, so I'm very happy to get that information.
Oh, I think Eric's already pulling it up for me if it's available. So thank you, Dr. Conway. So Commissioner Henderson, you're not comfortable in?
Well, I'm just, you know, this is the first that's been presented to us. This is the first time I've, we've had those questions. I'm just, I'm not against having an order in place if we need to do it. I just, I don't like whereas's that are, I mean, it's a legal document, and I like it to be accurate. Says there's a plan for hospital transportation as needed, the cleaning schedules will be established, personal print will be available.
On page three, there, at the bottom, who's, who's in charge of the, it needs to have a space between of and COVID on item number one. I don't know who's in charge of it. If you, if the legal document is supposed to be clean?
We can make that change. We have.
Okay, I did see that one.
Just, you know, we've, go back to what I said, which is we've been talking about this for weeks. I've actually put one of the hotels in contact with the county because they were interested in this, and it's been, but it seems like our numbers are decreasing, so if you look at this, I don't know at what, at what time or what conditions we're going to use this, I guess is what I'm wondering. I mean, so it says, and what the order is, is designate the local public health and law enforcement authorities utilize non-congregate shelter for homeless persons and other high-risk populations that cannot safely shelter congregant settings as needed to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So we're, so we're saying some group of public health and law enforcement will decide that we use it to a certain level, other than the use of various lodging types.
There's another correction on page two in the middle, the whereas Deschutes County, they've got no space between four and COVID again?
Got it.
Chair Adair, going back to your earlier question, on the, the 2020 point in time count numbers are not listed on the Homeless Leadership Coalition website currently.
Okay, I didn't think they'd given them out yet. All right, thank you, Eric.
Well, Dave's our lawyer, and so if he doesn't have any ideas of any ways we can alter this, I guess it would be, you know, I'm not, I don't know how we can, but I'm.
Commissioners, I don't, I respect what Dr. Conway said, but we have made some changes already to some of the wording. So in all due respect to him, I would estimate that we do have some ability to make some minor changes in the flow as long as we're not changing the central point of this, which is, you know, having the order in place to, in order to qualify for FEMA reimbursement. So, you know, clearly we have some corrections to make anyway, and just some of the typos, so we're happy to do that, and we can try and answer some of the issues that you brought up today, and we can bring it back at your next meeting. And also, if you have a, would like to have a further opportunity to read through it and make some comments, we're happy to incorporate those as well.
Does this need to go in with our plan, though? Isn't it part of, it's not part of our plan?
It's referenced in the plan, but I don't.
It's referenced, but we could actually possibly clean it up if we want, if we needed to, so.
So I actually want to, excuse me, I want to point out, I actually wasn't saying that every word needed to be as it is. I understood that certain language in it was required. And once again, I'm sorry that Nathan wasn't able to be here. Chris Wyler tried to call in because he's also been involved in the conversations, he wasn't able to get in. So I think bringing it back with Nathan confirmed to be able to answer those questions or Chris as a backup would be, would be fine, and then we have the questions to work on.
Yeah, or maybe we could have just independent meetings to verify some of this. I mean, there's lots of stuff that is specific to Deschutes County, so who, and I thought, I think it was actually Council Doyle that was the one that said that he'd been given a template from Nathan is what I, isn't that what I heard?
Right.
I'm happy, I'm also happy to do reconnaissance, and I have briefings scheduled with each of you tomorrow. I can do reconnaissance, I can ask Nathan to join me if you want to pick that up then because, I mean, it's important, I think it's important to get done, I think it may be important if it's invoked in the plan that you're working on. So we're happy to do that. I'm very sorry that I don't have the information. Thanks.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a motion.
Not seconded, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll follow up. I definitely support the plan. You know, it might be good to hear a little bit more about it.
Certainly.
So that would be excellent. Thank you. Now we have special events.
Good morning. Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator again. More for the viewing public. What we're talking about today is special events that are permitted through the county's Risk Management Department. So that's specifically what we're talking about. As background, on April 15th, the board passed Board Order Number 2020-023 that required any special events permitted through the county that were occurring on May 31st or sooner, required a social distancing plan. So that's the current status. Next, I wanted to provide the board a quick update on events. What we've seen is, is there's, we have a kind of a calendar of upcoming events, and they have been either postponing or canceling as we get closer to those events. Kind of next up on the calendar is the Pacific Crest Endurance Sports Festival. That's a series of different events, including a running events, triathlon, cycling events, swimming. That's scheduled for June 19th through 21st in Sun River. The event organizer is evaluating different options, looking at possibly doing a virtual event, postponing or canceling, and based on what's been reported in the news media, Pacific Crest will announce their decision this Friday. Another event, this one is a City of La Pine event that the city permits, Frontier Days, which is held July 1st through 4th, has been changed to just be a fireworks display only. And then another event that the City of La Pine would permit, the High Lakes Car Club Swap Meet, which was scheduled for May 16th, has been canceled. So that's just a quick update on, on events that are coming up.
So, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails from people that, I mean, some are really harsh about canceling the Pacific Crest. I'm comfortable waiting to see what they do on their own on Friday. I mean, it's the first day of May, I guess, and we're talking about an event seven weeks later, so I'm comfortable with that. I don't want to make a decision at this, you know, it's up to them.
I spoke to residents, local folks, Sun River area, that have volunteered for the event over the years, have participated in the past, and they celebrate the fact that it's really a very successful sports weekend. It seems to be prudent at this time to cancel that event for clarity for the citizens, so I would go that way with this. You know, getting down to specifics, I don't know if we want to say, you know, event permit revocation for any event before June 30th, or, you know, I don't know exactly what we might want to do, so I'm just trying to work through this. I did talk to the event operator a couple times, and she said that they just, they do, it naturally has a lot of high points of contact. The gathering is the event, getting folks, socializing before and afterwards, celebration at the end of the, then there's multiple events in this, too. For citizens' support of Sun River, Caldera Springs, Crosswater, and the greater area, I would support pulling this event permit. So I don't know how we, I'm just letting, you know, I'd like to proceed with that today. And the event operator wants to basically do this in partnership and understanding it's going to be helpful to, you know, have it canceled under health emergency at this point in time, instead of thinking that somebody could do an event, you know, but chose us not to.
So, Mr. Doyle, I believe I've talked to you about this in the past, and actually, Pacific Crest organizers have the authority in this case, isn't, is that not what you have told me?
Well, certainly, Commissioner, I'll do the best I can to address the question. A lot of this probably belongs in an executive session, so I'm going to be somewhat guarded in what I say, but every time the county takes affirmative action to cancel things and reject things, you're certainly opening yourself up to certain claims from people that are going to feel they were damaged by that. My understanding is a good portion of that event occurs on roads that are owned and maintained by the Sun River Owners Association within Sun River itself. So, you know, whether they have the ability to disallow use of that and whether that would then cascade into having the event canceled, you have to draw your own conclusion on that. But certainly, there are other options, including the event organizer pulling the plug of their own accord in light of all the uncertainty. So, so, so yes, I mean, this is again, a county-issued event permit to be distinguished from a county mass gathering permit where you don't have the statutory mandate or authority to apply certain public health and environmental health standards that you do in the case of a mass gathering. Typically, counties involve with event permits because something might occur on a portion of our road or a portion of our right-of-way, and if someone were to get hurt while they're in that road or right-of-way, the county wants to make sure that it's insured since it's not the county's event, and the event organizers haven't gone through the detailed process like a mass gathering would have done. So that's sort of the backdrop that I, and I hope I answered your question.
Well, once again, I mean, in support of public safety and the request from the Sheriff's Office, and also, you know, public health, just not bringing that many people together for an official event, I can't imagine that we would be wanting to leave this event permit in place, knowing that, you know, just, I mean, a sports, sports event with people working out hard next to each other is just probably the not prudent thing. So this is where, where I'm at.
But what I heard said was that two days from now, they may do that on their own, so, and I guess what I'm hearing Council Doyle saying is that we do have some exposure by taking, independently counseling any event, and he's saying that maybe Sun River Owners Association could also cancel it, so I'm willing to wait two days. It seems like these organizations have been canceling. I mean, I think didn't the Sun River Music Festival, which is not till September, cancel?
It's in August, isn't it?
It's in September.
Really? They cancel?
I'm comfortable waiting till next week.
Okay.
Unless, yeah.
All right, so they'll, they'll give their ruling on Friday, and if we, we are comfortable with that ruling, then we can re, we can look at it again next Wednesday. Because we, we would have priority, if they said, oh, we're going to go ahead and do it, we could actually stop it next week, could we not?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
And I do share the concerns about if the COVID-19 wave continues into, you know, June, that this, these are the kinds of activities that shouldn't go on. I agree with that.
But don't forget, the LA Marathon ran March 8th, and what did it do to LA County's numbers? I don't think it, yeah.
You know, and that's the bigger issue of all this, that how much are we going to cancel of our lives over this? I mean, how many events? When I heard the Sun River Music Festival in September, that's, seems like a long time, but from now.
So along with this, we haven't, I don't know that we plan on bringing it up today, but the short-term rental ban is going to be expiring in about two weeks, so that's.
It's on the agenda for next Wednesday, unless you want to bring it up now.
Well, I'm just acknowledging that, you know, kind of queuing one is going to affect the other, too, so, yeah, and maybe that's good, you know, the fact that we can let the world know we're going to talk about it next week, because that's the other thing we're being asked about very specifically right now, so.
We have put it on next Wednesday's agenda.
Okay.
If I may, Commissioners, one more thing on the events. The board has received a number of emails related to the Pacific Crest Festival, our sports weekend, and I have a draft email if the board wants to review that in terms of responding to those emails.
Okay.
If the board wants to go through that today, we don't have to, but I just wanted to offer that.
I saw your. I saw your email, and I think it's good to have a, an email we use. I mean, we're getting, you know, all sorts of emails about it, so.
Is the board comfortable then with the draft response?
Yes.
And who would you like that to go out from? It could come out from me as the event, or as the person who approves events, or the board chair, or the Commissioners?
You could send it on behalf of us.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So.
And next, and next week when we come back, we'll continue to have the events on the agenda, and I will update the board of any changes to events that we know about.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
I hadn't heard that the La Pine had changed the Frontier Days. Was that in the last week that they decided?
It was like two weeks ago, wasn't it?
Like a week or two ago.
And did I hear that the Sisters Quilt Festival was going viral or something?
Virtual.
Virtual, oh, gosh.
Yeah, that was this week.
Wow.
These are
These are really impactful times. Okay, business assistance?
Thank you, Commissioners. Actually, David Givens, our county internal auditor, is going to lead this discussion. And I believe also available on the line is Scott Akok from Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, who's been standing up a business assistance, both grant and loan program. We have an opportunity to participate in that program as Jefferson County has done and some of the cities have done. So really, the purpose of today is to give you an update on what we've been up to with respect to, you know, updating our resource page on what's available to businesses, and then to outline this opportunity. It's just an option for the board to consider on whether you'd like to become more active in that. So with that, I will turn it over to David.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dave.
As you said, impactful times, and especially for our small businesses out there. And so we've been, as you said, we have a website for COVID-19 Assistance Matters for businesses. One of the things that, Scott Akok's is on the line, he's COIC's manager over community and economic development. And he heads a Central Oregon Emergency Grant Loan Group for the, for the region. And he's been working on COIC's efforts to leverage monies and resources for the benefit of small businesses. And so they currently have kind of a couple programs. They have a loan program and a grant program. The loan program probably is, is one that, again, I, maybe I should ask first, have you guys looked at the material that I provided along with this topic?
Yes.
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 Okay, so, so what this, what this does is the loan program, and Scott, feel free to jump in anywhere if you feel the need. But the loan program is, they're not necessarily, you know, it's open up to anyone who really wants to contribute. In fact, they've even had some interest, I think, from even private people to put money towards private sector businesses' support. So the loans are kind of low-interest loans. They are, right now, they're kind of considered as emergency loans, loans that would help people get through until they could reopen. They're also considering later phases of loans, but they're like, you know, two and a half percent loans, no interest for the first six months. The next six months, probably interest only, and then start making payments after that. But, you know, there is some due diligence that's done on the loans in terms of, you know, where the criteria that are set up. These would be specific, some of these are, you know, geared towards smaller, smaller businesses, businesses that have been impacted by COVID negatively and are in our region. The people who put money into these various things can control a little bit of the criteria that goes into establishing who gets these monies, you know, maybe, you know, they maybe not get other support from any other way. And then the other thing that COIC has been working on with some of the agencies has been grants. And the grants are, as it implies, they're grants, there's no repayment requirement. And there are, there's some support from the Oregon Community Foundation for that. And right now, you know, there's some, some specific earmarks under that grant, but there's, you know, there's opportunities there again. If the county wants to get involved in either of these programs, this is something that's an option. So, Scott, maybe you could talk a little bit about, you know, what you're thinking.
Sure, thanks, David, and good morning, Commissioners.
Hello, Scott.
What we, good morning. So where we're at is, David did a good job. We do have sort of two separate but related programs. We have a grant program, which is actually, at this point, entirely funded by Oregon Community Foundation, a grant that we received last night officially. And so that is $100,000, and it's, it's basically on that same team that David was talking about that we've been convening. We asked who's interested in participating in a grant program in your community, and that you don't already have resources to make happen. And so since Crinville and Crook County had resources pulled together, and then later Madras developed something as well, the hands that went up were La Pine, Sisters, Jefferson County outside of Madras, and then clientele of the Latino Community Association. So each of them are getting $25,000 to administer to small businesses. And these are very small grants, like $500, $1,000, no repayment or anything like that. And there's the, each pool is going to have a small, a set of slightly different criteria for selecting who gets those grants. We are really just a pass-through agent on that. On the loan program, that's more, I guess, the emphasis today with you, we've taken $200,000 of our existing small business loan funds to dedicate to this first-round emergency loan fund. It actually opens tomorrow, and that's available across the region. And the Jefferson County Commission elected to put $70,000 into it and ask that we match it. So what that means is that we set aside a third of our $200,000 initial investment to match their, they put in 70, we set aside 67, because that's a third. So the balance, the remaining two-thirds are currently available for Deschutes or Crook County businesses. The only thing I would add is David noted that it's very low interest, it's two and a half percent. There's actually no payments the first six months, then interest only the next six months, and then full payments from that point forward. We've set it from loans as low as $5,000 for very small businesses and up to $20,000. We also, there's no collateral requirements. This is a real quick turnaround loan program, it's about three days. And then, but the piece, the piece really important is that we did make efforts. The application is going to request the last two years of profit and loss statements and, or tax returns if they don't have those, to demonstrate that it was actually a viable business before the shutdown orders. That's, that's it. It's an opportunity if the county would like to invest in it. We could do the same thing we did with Jefferson County and match it, and make sure that all those dollars stay in Deschutes County. And just any questions, I'm happy to address.
So maybe just a quick introduction for people that are following what COIC is, if anybody wants to do that, or I can do that.
You want me to?
Sure, if you're ready for it, yeah.
Sure, yeah. COIC is the region's council of governments. COIC stands for Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council. We are formed by the cities and counties of Central Oregon, actually, all the way back to 1972, to do work on behalf of the cities and counties. It's work that maybe makes sense to work at at a regional scale, or sometimes we provide technical assistance to smaller communities, et cetera. So that's the broad brush of who we are, and our website is COIC.org.
And traditionally, there has been a, of kind of a federal business loan fund, or, yeah, if you can explain that real quick.
Yes, we have, we manage, we used to manage three, we now manage two federally-backed, if you will, small business loan programs. One is from the Economic Development Administration, and that's where these funds are coming from, our $200,000 I talked about. The total amount remaining in that fund that to be loaned is more, closer to a million. So we're looking at several rounds potentially of this response loan program. The other fund is managed, it's from the USDA's intermediary relending program. That one's a little more difficult for us to make available for this, because we still owe money to the USDA on that program. So we're, that one's more conservative, if you will. We're a little more careful with that. And that one's, we're not touching that at this time, but it'll come into play in the coming months.
Great, yeah, so it's a tri-county intergovernmental council. There's been a long history of these business loan funds backed by the federal government, and now being able to switch gears and getting some, some dollars that have been there for this purpose, maybe repurposing a little bit in this time of emergency is a great opportunity. So, yeah, weeks ago, I started to talk to a few different people about, you know, where could the county plug in? If, if there was a valuable way to do it for supporting small businesses. I know we've, we've done business, you know, loans/grants for startups since 10 or 12 years ago, the last recession is when the county stepped into something like this. I mean, that, this is more small businesses than a traded sector, but there's been a purpose to, you know, just advocate and, you know, partner with businesses that need some support at this point in time. We do need to remember, though, that this is government sending money back. I mean, hopefully, you know, these EDA funds from the federal government, that's what it's purposed for. But, you know, a thriving business economy with payroll and taxes is the way our government and our society works. So, yeah, this is a little bit of feedback if we get to it.
May I add another comment?
Please.
Which is that we could structure this, if the county decided to invest, like I said, match-type model, or whatever makes sense to you. The other part, as I wanted to note, that what we offered to Jefferson County and Crook County is going to, my understanding they're considering this next week, is we can either just, you know, it can be, we can pay you back what we get back, so it goes back into your fund.
That was my question.
Or you can elect, pardon?
That was going to be my question. I was going to, I was wondering where the money was going to go when the people we helped actually did pay you back, so.
Yeah, that's up to you. It either can come back to you. The, what we have to stand by, though, is that if there are defaults, and certainly this is a time where there's a higher chance of businesses defaulting on loans than other times, that we would not be, we would share that risk, if you will. So if we match, that's a matched risk, so half of the default will come out of us, half of it will come out of your funds. And, or you could elect to, you know, we could certainly, whatever we get back, we could have an agreement to reinvest, relend within the county, just keep it in the loan program. So either way, it's really, completely up to you how you'd like to see that structured.
Tom, have you or David talked about what the source of this funding would be if we did decide to partner with COIC?
Yeah, good question. I expected that one. So we are, as you all know, in emergency times. The board has passed an emergency order. So you've already directed me to identify where $250,000 would come from, which is half of the commitment that the board made to the EOC's budget, that the sheriff is sharing with us. We've talked before about augmenting the lottery fund for the purpose of funding some higher priority agencies that are part of that group that we're unable to do as part of the lottery fund shortfall. And then this opportunity. So the $250,000, Greg Munn and I have discussed, and we would propose that that come out of our general fund reserves. As you know, we do have funds in reserve that, as of now, are designated for future capital projects. So that would be the source, that we pull back some of that and make available under this, again, emergency environment that we find ourselves in related to the pandemic for immediate use. So that is a policy choice of the board. So in order to formally make that designation and elect to use those reserve funds, that is a choice that we will ultimately bring to you for, you know, a final decision, a decision as part of the, you know, closing the books for the current fiscal year FY '20.
So what are the terms of the loans that are given?
I defer to Scott on that one.
So, and you mean beyond, well, there's, like we said, two and a half percent interest? The, are you asking the time, the timeframe?
Well, yeah, all that, I mean, those are the terms, yeah, the time and the interest and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Are there payments, or do they just pay it all back in ones?
So they're going to, so the, depending on the size of the loan and the need, the term is going to vary from maybe 24 months to 48, something like that. If it's a $5,000 loan, probably not going 48 months, right? But then the business actually, the interest, the two and a half percent interest accrues, you know, the first month. But they don't have any payments for six months at all. There's no payments required, then it's interest only, and then full payments after that through the end of the term, which, like I just said, is going to be negotiated. There are no fees to the business to apply. We actually, I should have mentioned this earlier, that grant that I spoke to on the, from Oregon Community Foundation is going to pay those transaction costs, which were already very low, but now they're zero. So, so no fees to the business, two and a half percent, and then, as I said, the repayment schedule is going to vary. But no one's paying anything for six months.
So I would, if we were doing so, I guess we would look at this as kind of a matching fund, that we, that we contribute $50,000, and you're saying COIC would contribute $50,000, we'd have $100,000 available to do this business assistance. Is that kind of the right way to look at it?
Or would you look at it like, okay, so if Jefferson County has taken $70,000, if it's the three counties, is what you were saying, and who knows what Crook County is going to do, we could do $70,000, you would match it with 70, and that would give $140,000 available for businesses in our county that could apply for either, what is it, five to 20,000 max? The 20,000 is the max. Now, do they have to, like, be a Schedule C, a small proprietor? Do they have to have employees, nothing like that?
The only requirement is they have 20 or less FTE as of December 2019.
20 or less FTE?
20 or less, so 20 is the max.
Okay.
It's meant to be small businesses, which means, you know, your sole proprietors, et cetera, would be eligible as well.
So the other thing is that we talked internally about whether these are available to any businesses anywhere in the county, or would this be targeted at our unincorporated areas such as, you know, Terribon and Tumalo and some of the things that are not in cities? Have we talked about that at all, or?
That is up to you. You can designate where those funds would go, anywhere in the county, or unincorporated areas, or smaller cities. That is completely a policy choice of the board.
Agreed. We talked about all that stuff, too, and really thrown around a lot of possibilities. And really what we wanted this to be is a way to fill gaps that other programs aren't filling. And I had been under the impression there were going to be more focused loan programs for, that were more available in Bynum Redmond. But then not really seeing that come together. So we decided to not put any restrictions on it geographically, just from our perspective. But we're happy to work with whatever you guys want.
So how do, is it first in time, first considered, or how do you, I mean, say you get 100, you know, up?
If you can only give seven, and they all are asking for 20,000, I mean, you know, and you get 100 applications.
Yeah, that's, so we've selected a, as you may know, we had two loan officers on staff until October, and they both retired on the same day. And so we created a partnership with an outfit called Community Lending Works, which is based out of Eugene, but they were the lowest-cost provider. And they've gone through this a couple times now with the loan program over there. And what they've done is they keep it open for, you know, they don't just close it as soon as
It's full.
They keep it open for five days, get all the applications, and then we go through a scoring. And so it is timestamped, so if a business rates the same as another business, the one that got it in earlier would get the preference. Other than that, it's just gonna be that consideration. There's, there's a couple other factors. Like I said, there's demonstrating they were actually a viable business. And then they're also required to, to provide a recovery, an emergency recovery plan. I can't remember the exact term. So those are some things that might move a business up or down. But at the end of the day, whoever's tied, it's first, you know, first in.
So Scott, to be clear, you said that you received 100,000 from the Oregon Community Foundation, and that money is what you're gonna use to fund the Lapine Sisters, Jefferson, and the Latino Foundation? Is that what you're doing with that 100,000?
Yes, that is for the grant program.
The grant program, which we'll just give them, but it's just really like 500 to $1,000. And those, those groups are gonna be in charge of that dis- dispersment, then?
Yeah, we, some of them want us to handle the money, some wants us to give them the money for them to disperse. But either way, it's local teams that will be making those decisions, not us.
Okay. Well, talking to people that haven't made it through the PPP, I know there's tremendous need in our community. And, you know, doing seven loans at 20,000 is really pretty immaterial, I think, for a lot of people and their cash flow at this time. So would we really, if we wanted to do the 140,000 or the 130,000 that's remaining, is that a possibility if we match that? Or do you really, are you holding that for Crook County?
We feel it's important to set aside some for Crook County. I think we kind of had a, they would have ruled yes, I don't wanna speak for them. So we, we'd like to set aside some for Crook County. Now, if you wanna add more than just that one-to-one match, obviously, we'd work with you on that. We might be able to pull some additional funding loose to better match you one-to-one. But I would, I'm not, I can't, I can't make that call right this second. I'd have to check in with a couple other folks on that. So I'm sorry, I don't have a clearer answer. I know we can match 70. Above that, I, we'd have to move some other funds around.
Okay.
We also should know, like I said, we're gonna have more than one round of this. The first round happens tomorrow. So if you were, you know, interested in putting 70 in, we could then announce. We have, would actually be 137, because we could match it 67, if you will, but available for Deschutes County in round one. And then we are looking more, maybe modifying it a little bit to think more about reopening costs versus just sort of emergency funds. So there could be other, there, there will be other rounds, and we could talk about other, other leverages for those future rounds.
So a couple thoughts I have. One is that it just seems to me that even if we do 140, it seems like $20,000 loans is, I mean, we've, we have hundreds of businesses in our county. So getting it down to five or six can borrow two and a half percent money doesn't seem like much of an impact, I guess. The other is I'm not sure with the general fund, with just property tax dollars. I'm not sure what level I'd wanna do that at this point. I, I just don't know how many people will help. I guess, would we have any say? I mean, I would, I would think you'd wanna do smaller loans that you wouldn't have any that are 20,000 because you'd use up the money so fast. But is that what, I think some other counties are doing this, is that correct?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's entirely up to you. You could say that for the Deschutes County portion, you wanna limit it to 10,000 or 5,000 or whatever. I, this was modeled in large part on what Lane County and some of the cities within Lane County did. And it was this, essentially, we're almost the same size, that, you know, there's, I agree with you. I wish this was at least 10 times the size that it is, but.
Well, the federal government's doing this. They're doing three or four or five trillion dollars of this. So it's, you know, there is federal programs to do these things, too. So it's, it's not just up to us, is how I feel.
Yeah, yeah.
But unfortunately, that didn't get to the lower level. When you look, the funding went to Steve, Steve Jobs's widow and the LA Lakers.
Well, some did, but some didn't. Some went to, I know businesses here that have gotten it that are.
I saw where.
Would be the same people that are, would, could apply for this loan. So I'm just saying, we don't really know how many, I think it wasn't, Congressman Wallace, there was like 18,000 Oregon businesses that gotten those funds, but.
I know locally, mid-Oregon, I think, did, what, 8.2 million dollars worth of loans? I know it wasn't huge numbers, but at least I knew it was local. So they were helped.
Yeah, we, we see this as additive, like I said before, certainly not the major contributor to meeting this need. But it's something that we're hearing, folks, I've been getting hounded by folks as to when we're gonna put the details out and make the application live, and that's tomorrow, by the way. But we know there will be a lot of applicants.
So it boils down to an amount and maybe capital preservation or not? As in, does, does Deschutes County expect to have a return of some sort or not? Would this be a grant or, you know, an investment to be expected to be? Basically, it could be a negative investment, you know, knowing that its dollar is going to a loan fund that are probably not gonna grow, they're gonna shrink. Or is it a one-week grant?
I personally think we should get paid back, because who knows what we're gonna be looking at? We're just trying to help bridge and possibly maxing it at 10,000 for Deschutes County, so that more than, you know, a few, you know, it doesn't do much, but at least it, it might help a little bit.
So Scott, if we talk about returning the capital at some point, what, what does that horizon look like?
So we'd be looking at a max of about 48 months for all of those loans to be due back. You know, the, the full, the full payments.
Yeah.
Now, so that could get paid back, you know, with what we have each year, or just all at once? However, again, that's up to you.
Yeah, great. Well, I like the idea of, you know, capital preservation, which is returning some of the dollars as they come on an annual basis. And I'm, you know, thinking that the $70,000 is a great number that we, if we can get there today, so the community knows it's happening, since they're prepared for an announcement tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Just trying to put some structure to it.
And just so you know, I actually have a draft press release that would have to, it would be going out later today, because we need to announce it the day before it, it goes live. And all of our partners are ready to push it out, too. So just so you know.
There's also a discussion, I had a discussion with Craft 3 representative, and they're a community development financial institute, institution. And they've got some dollars that we could kind of do something like this with also. But it would boil down to that same contact, concept of a, either a grant to backfill risk or, or not, you know, or a capital preservation of some sort. So I'm just saying, there's other folks working on this also.
So we need a motion?
But, yeah, I mean, I'm just, put some structure around it. I'm hesitant to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time we've done this, where we're taking general fund money to, as a low, as a lender to businesses. We did, have done it with regard to the, what is it, through the lottery funds, I guess.
Right.
We've done it for businesses we vet, but they have, the, they have to guarantee more employees. This is a different kind of fund, so I, I'm just trying to imagine what people in our county want their general fund dollars to be spent for. I have no idea whether there's a good support for this or not. But I hear more than loans is people just needing, that are on verge of going broke. And I don't know if a loan gets you ahead the same as a grant. I mean, borrowing more money doesn't really make your business, I mean, maybe you pay some bills with it, but you still have to, the real issue is reopening your economy so they can do business. That's what most people want. So I guess I haven't heard the same desire for loans, but that, maybe I wouldn't, so.
Well, and I would do, I would support the fact that there, there's businesses holding on right now. And, you know, the conclusions, what we're hearing from the Health Department, our Phase 1 proposal, getting an economy going, it looks like, so I'm, I'm gonna talk about a vision kind of statement. Then this summer, we could be practicing social distancing, wearing masks, and having a local economy, which probably isn't spinning up tourism as much as we'd like. But for that subset of local businesses that are just right, kind of on the teetering edge, this could really provide the opportunity for some businesses to kind of make it over the hump and kind of evolve in the new reality, so.
But, but thinking about small businesses, which you have knowledge of, too, do you think borrowing the money gets them over the hump, or is it really a grant?
Well, you know, there, come to think of it, I mean, I've heard discussions, lower-cost money may be valuable if it's not, you know, I'm like, if somebody started living off a credit card, which is 10, 12, 15, 18 percent, and you can get two and a half percent money and clear that and lower the interest? I mean, there may be very big opportunities for, you know, prudent people that just need to lower their long-term holding costs of dollars, too. So there, yeah. There's, there's good things that could happen.
If, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry to interject, but I'm, I'm very clear that there's a demand for this from our chamber partners, Small Business Development Center, Business Oregon, they're all communicating. They have folks ready that are very interested in this, because it's, because it is very low-cost money with a period of time before they have to pay it back. I do agree that, you know, obviously, folks would prefer grants, but there's only so much of that to go around. So, anyway.
And I, I guess I will, I'll make a, a motion that we provide $73,000 to make it a nice round amount in the press release as a contribution to this loan fund with the expectation of, you know, capital preservation as much as possible and to be, you know, settled up annually for a four-year period.
And I'll amend it to say a maximum of 10,000?
That's fine. Yep.
A friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment accepted.
Would anybody be open to amendment about trying to spread it out through the various communities of Deschutes County? I mean, some kind of a.
Well, I, I'm just thinking procedurally, maybe if we wanna do that, let's have that conversation afterwards as guidance.
Right.
You know, if we get to a motion where we're providing X amount, then we can talk about other guidance for Scott.
Yes, definitely. Geographically, spreading it out, because it looks like the other money, the foundation money is really pretty immaterial. I mean, it's, you know, it, definitely getting $500 is better than nothing. But, you know, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty brutal world out there right now. If you haven't, you haven't heard from your unemployment and you haven't gotten any of your other checks, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's a pretty cold, cold world, so.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, with my amendment.
As amended.
Okay. Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
So then, yeah, other guidance for geographic area specifically, I'd.
So it will be a total then of 140,000, because we're doing 73,000, and you are matching it with 67,000?
Yes, understood.
With a $10,000 max, with a, hopefully, representative of our entire county?
So Commissioner Henderson, when you talk about kind of geographic.
Wondering about it, yeah.
I mean, my thought is, anybody in Deschutes County in partnership with COIC, which, with the other counties, so the tri-county area will have some kind of opportunity. So what were you thinking about?
Well, just within the county, I mean, we're, we're, it's not, you know, there's different places. It'd be nice if it was played, you know, geographically, it got to different businesses throughout the county. And there's only, if they're $5,000 loans, it's only 28 loans, but.
Right.
10,000, it's 14. So I, I don't know, I just was thinking about it. If I was, if you got 50 applications, I really don't know how they're gonna decide things. So I was just like, well, we don't want them all to go to one city, for instance, or we don't want them all to go to one industry necessarily, I guess, or do we? I mean, that's, I'm just bringing it up as a topic.
Scott, any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, certainly we can set aside sort of pools for each community, and then another one for unincorporated, something like that. You know, something for Benton Redmond, Sisters and Lapine, you know, prorated by population or however you'd wanna do it, and then another amount.
Tumalo and Terrebonne.
Well, and I was kind of including them in unincorporated, so I, yeah, I don't know.
They are, they are part of the.
About Sun River.
Yes.
And Sun River is, too.
Definitely, yes.
What about Alfalfa?
So Alfalfa, so those are all the unincorporated, so you have to kind of think about it. Well, maybe Dave could help on that, to figure something out.
And don't forget, yes, because nobody's driving out to Brothers now.
David Givens?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I would, I would ask him to stay connected to Scott and work with him to help ensure, you know, that there is, you know, an equitable distribution of those funds. I don't know that we need hard, exact limits, but just a general equitable distribution, I think, is something that we can certainly help ensure.
The other thing is, I'm, I'm wondering about, I mean, it's good you have a press release already, ready, Scott, but it seems like maybe it'd be good to have a press release go out this week and then we apply on Monday or something, so people could think about it. Because this is a new thing, and so, I don't know, give people at least a chance to get ready for it if they're interested. I, that's one thought. The other thought is, I, I haven't seen the press release, but hopefully we'll say something like, you know, Deschutes County is partnering with COIC for this and something, so.
I have a placeholder for that. I have a placeholder in case you wanted to. Yeah, we could delay the opening. I, I, yeah, we, we could delay the opening. I, I don't think we'd wanna delay just the Deschutes County part. I think we'd delay the whole thing if we, if decided to do that, because it just gets complicated and confusing for folks.
Yes, keep it simple. It'll be a lot better.
So why would it be delayed? I'm sorry.
Well, if you're in business and you're doing something else today, you don't, you're not ready. You don't have three years of profit and loss. You gotta find which, remember which folder they're in, and then you gotta get your tax returns, maybe they're better.
So delay opening or delay closing, or both?
But they're gonna timestamp it. It seems like you get a priority if you're, so you wanna be forwarding the queue. I'm just saying.
It could be, you could do it for Monday. That gives them, okay, they're gonna hear about it. Somebody's gonna tell them, get your application in, and then that gives everyone the weekend to get it in Monday, morning at 8:00 AM, or whenever you want it, except for your first application.
We'd open at 8:00 AM Monday morning, if that's what we went with, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about how important that timestamping was, but I should say, that's why it was lost a little, yep.
Because that's, that's only fair, because a lot of times, you know, life has gotten in the way.
It's a really good point. Yeah, I think that probably makes sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson, for thinking of that. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for bringing that opportunity for us. And, yes, something I'd asked about quite a while ago, so I appreciate knowing that it's gonna go forward.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, thanks to, you know, COIC and its long history, and that's our, our organization, which we're part of, with the other cities, and the leadership. I know the COIC, you know, leadership is a city councilor and the county commissions from the tri-county area. But also our other financial institutions working real hard right now. As I say, I spoke with Craft 3, and I know the credit unions and the banks are working real hard for all of our local businesses. And financial instability is very disconcerting for people. So let's support each other where we can.
Thank you very much.
If you could just get to your bank.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are now at 12:15. We are to be at Building Limited Access.
Commissioners, this is David.
Yes.
Did you end up voting on this? I didn't hear a vote.
I believe we did. Commissioner?
Karen says no.
We didn't?
Good, good catch.
Okay. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay, we're official. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you.
I dreamed it. I dreamed it.
I'm thinking we did, because then we started to talk about the next phase.
I thought we did too.
I thought we did too, because I said...
Well, we might have done it twice.
Well, I'm sure it's recorded now. So this is good, building limited access order, do we want to cover that now, or do we want to come back at 1:00?
Your choice.
I'd support that one right now, and then maybe diving into the last item after...
After, okay, all right, Eric?
Thank you, Deputy County Administrator Eric Crop, this discussion is about limited access to county buildings, as background, on March 25th, the board approved limiting access to county buildings through April 10th, that was revisited on April 6th, and at that time, the board agreed to extend the limited access through May 1st, which is this Friday, and by limited access, most, most county buildings are locked, but service continues, you could even see in this building where people, our customers can call in, and we try to direct them to the website, phone interactions and transactions, but we are happy to and willing to meet with people in person if, if that's the case. This week, we're taking tax payments, and you probably saw staff from our, our Finance and Tax Office are, are downstairs in the lobby, and if people need to drop off cash for a tax payment, we're able to do that transaction in, in person, so we just wanted to check in with the board, again, the current limited billing access is through this Friday, May 1st, and we are seeking board direction on whether or not to extend that or to end it.
I'm in favor of continuing it, but I like, I like what's out here now, and this is kind of what I envisioned when we originally did, is I personally would not mind if that door was open and other staff, you know, the clerk's office, or whoever else might need to be there had an office, or, I think it's friendly to people that want to use our resources, but I don't know whether there's any support for that, but I, it just seems to me that that, that's working, I, I talked with the employees that's working there collecting tax statements, and I think it's going pretty well, actually, so.
So I would support aiming at opening the doors, so my thought process would be to ask anybody if there's a, you know, extenuating circumstance where it's just not appropriate, you know, at the Health Department, possibly, having people walking in and sitting in a lobby area, but, you know, aiming for opening up these doors, and, you know, we've got the tape on the floor, and we can put the, you know, reminders in place, and I'm thinking this building, community development, there's, you know, the procedure of being able to meet with people, people have been real happy with it, people aren't congregating as much, people know to wear masks, so as I say, I would lean towards opening the doors, with the caveat of any department that has a concept of why that's not prudent at this time.
Commissioners, if you recall, prior to you executing this order, which actually, for the most part, locked the doors, we had an interim solution in place where we, we asked departments to establish their own, you know, appropriate social distancing protocols based on the nature of their operation, so one option for you to consider would be to essentially take one half step backwards, let the order expire, and then, then leave it to departments to go back to establishing, you know, business-specific distancing requirements within their operation, so, you know, this building is the one, obviously, that you see every day, and it, and it's in front of you, so, and what I've heard anecdotally related to this building is that they, there wouldn't be a big outcry if it was allowed to expire, that they, even with the locked door, that they have distancing protocols in place, you see the marks on the floor, and the chains upstairs, and the, the staff positioned at doorways, so, yeah, I, I think if you were to allow it to expire, and allowed for continued appropriate distancing measures in this building and each of the other buildings, everyone's kind of set up a little different, that, you know, that would probably be fine.
So that, yeah, very much, with that information, yeah, letting this order expire, and supporting, you know, I mean, as I say, full support for, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable, let's have that discussion, referring to staff helping the public.
Okay, and I, it might be a good time to bring up the fact that a couple of our administrative assistants probably need to have a little more of a safety shield there for them, so that's something that we may want to consider in the near future, but I, I would be happy to have it expire, honestly.
So is there a...
Do we need to have a vote?
Either we vote to extend it or not, or how does that work?
You don't need to vote, what the, the board approved was a minutes motion to have limited access through May 1st.
Yeah, so if we don't do anything, it expires.
I'm a little bit confused, Tom, are you saying that we could allow that to happen, but there may be some departments that want to continue closure, or what's...
No, not that they'd continue locking the doors, but that they would have their own individual protocols for how they interacted with customers that came in through the front door, so, you know, CDD, for example, you know, a different building has sort of a doorbell, you know, so that, essentially, the building's open, and all regular services are available to people, it's just a way to, for them to kind of control access a little bit, here, we would, you know, again, people could walk in our building, you know, we, we would, you know, try and continue, although we haven't thought that out specifically, have some kind of presence, like our Lorelei, our volunteer who's there normally, have some kind of a means to direct people to the proper location, so people aren't kind of wandering or milling about, and within our other buildings, it, it would be kind of variations, you know, Road Department is another example, has controlled access already, where they have a small lobby, and they have, you know, a receptionist with distancing requirement who can handle their business, which is mostly plats, frankly, at, at that location, Health, again, would, would kind of establish there, at their various locations, would, would most likely reestablish what they had before in terms of, you know, still trying to focus on remote work, but have a ability to, to interact with people who came to their locations.
The fact that Mosaic Medical is in the Courtney Building, and I remember, what was it, six weeks ago, when we went for a Friday afternoon meeting, we actually walked in, they took your temperature, they gave me a mask, I, I thought it was, it was a great addition to entering that building, and it is a health building, so if they would look back into that at some point, I think it would be worthwhile, so, okay, we've got enough direction on that, all right, so we will reconvene then at 1:00 PM, thank you so much. Afternoon session for the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Henderson will return with us shortly, in the meantime, we're actually going to have our Finance Director, Mr. Mann, review the finances for us for the month ending March 30th, 31st, 2020, so thank you, Greg.
Good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
And how's the screen look?
Little, looks pretty little, all right.
Microscopic.
I've got my, we've got our paperwork clear, so.
Hang on a second, let me, how's that?
That is even bigger, yes, that looks fine, I can read it behind me.
Okay. All right, let me finish swallowing here. All right, so I'll just run you through the report like I normally do, but I want to spend a little bit, little bit more time in the detail on the, on the back pages, and I'm, I'm gonna highlight some of the differences from last month's report that have to do with projections that we're looking at now as a result of the COVID-19 issue, so, just starting on the Treasury and the investment side, you can see there, I'm gonna scroll down here, you can see the summary of our portfolio right here, $225.5 million, so that is a decrease of about $12 million from last month, that I shared with you, which is about average, it's about our average monthly use, use of cash, it's actually a little bit less than that, but that's barely average number in use of cash out of the portfolio, and, so, although it's a decrease of $12 million from last month, it's an increase of $17 million from a year ago, and if you slide over and look at the percentage breakdown of the portfolio, I just want to let you know that everything is within category maximums set by policy, with the exception of the corporate notes right here, you'll notice that it's at 26.6 percent, and our category maximum is 25 percent, and the reason, the reason for that is that we had a, we had a series of redemptions in our Treasuries, so we had, we had about $14 million in categories that would fall under these US Treasuries line item that came back to us, that were actually redeemed, so we were within the category maximum of the corporate notes last month, but because the reduction in US Treasuries and the spend of that cash, it actually pushes that up a little bit over 20, over 25 percent, so we'll continue to walk towards getting that number down under the 25 percent number as we move forward in time, one thing I will note, as the PERS Employee, Employer Incentive Fund deposit that will be going into PERS here in the next couple of weeks, is going to drop our portfolio by $13 million, that reduction in that denominator will naturally increase the percentages that each one of these items makes compared to the total, so there'll be a little bit of effect there, but continue to work on that, getting that underneath the policy limit, okay, if you slide over here to the right, our investment income, our net investment income was $355,000, $356,000 for the month, was about $5,000 less than last month, and about $63,000 less than the $419 you see there from the prior year, so that's just reflective of our trend and our interest rates dropping, we still are above our interest income year-to-date of $3.365 million, is still above the prior year's year-to-date number of $3.1 million. And let's drop down here and look at yield percentages real quick, you can see that our average monthly yield portfolio is 2.2 percent, or was 2.2 percent, it has dropped to 2.06 percent, and just for comparative purposes, in January, it was 2.26 percent, so you can see that average decline in yield to maturity in our portfolios, the LGIP rate last month was 2.25 percent, it's dropped to 2 percent in March, and as of April 2nd, it dropped further to 1.75 percent.
Okay, whoa, we're, we're really going down, aren't we?
Yes, we are, if you flip to the next page, can you see this graph up here that I'm showing, sharing with you? The, the major change in what's going on in the market, and it's reflected in these numbers or in these lines here, is you can see the US, the two-year Treasury rate, somewhere around the December-January timeframe, really took a dive, and the last time we bought a US Treasury was in January, and we bought it at 1.57 percent, and now the rate is somewhere around 20 basis points, so we haven't bought a US Treasury since then, so this decline, this red line that's going down, doesn't directly affect the blue line, which is our line here, but it's just a, this is a real time of what the rates are at that point, that doesn't mean that's what we bought at, the last time we bought was right here in January. This, and I'll share a little bit more with you, this, this little uptick here on the corporate rates, that has to do with the reach for liquidity, so a lot of bond funds were finding themselves needing cash, and so a quick way to gain cash is to further discount your bonds that are on the secondary market, which, or on the buyer's side, increases your yield to maturity, so you see a little bit there. Any questions on that so far?
No.
Thank you very much for the information about why these are going up and down too, though, that's helpful.
Yeah, all right, so I am down on the details, and a couple of things I'll share with you, can you, when I highlight, can you see that on your screen?
We can see it on our forum, you've got...
We can see where...
...highlighted in blue on our...
Okay, so I'm looking up here, I'm looking at the US Treasury, it's the fifth line down...
12420.
Yep, so if you scroll over and you see this 1.57, that was the last, that was the last Treasury that we bought, that was in January, and that was our yield to maturity of 157, those are paying 20 to 25 basis points now, that was what I was talking about a few minutes ago, the other thing I want to point out here is, if you look at, well, let's pick this Toyota here, the one we, the one we purchased March 25th...
Yes.
It's the first blue line, you'll notice that the, the yield to maturity is, is 2.79 percent, and there was a short window there where some of these corporates, some, some of the other, some agency funds were being deeply discounted because these bond funds need to capture as much cash, they were short on cash, they needed liquidity, so there was a couple of days here where we were able to buy a couple of these items at a pretty substantial return, so this one was 2.8, the federal home loan, which is the next one, was 2.7, if you scroll down, we bought some Apple at 3.2, these deals are all gone, this happened in a day or two, I just want to point that out.
So do you get a special beep on your phone when these special deals come in?
There should be an app for that, wouldn't that be great?
Well, I would think there would be, you're buying Apple.
Yep, I have some, unfortunately, I don't have a, I have an Android phone, so that might make it smoke or something, I have, I have some great brokers I work with that are super helpful.
Well, this is probably an industry-wide activity, where the US Treasuries were dropping down, corporate needed cash, people that had their returns on the federal dollars, so this probably happened through the industry, huh?
It did, it did, but it was just a couple of days there where these were available.
And you were ready for it, thank you very much.
So I bought as many as I could, okay, I'm rolling on to dog licensing, I mentioned this last month, we started a new online dog license renewal system, and last month, I told you that we had processed 40 at that point, since then, since we started in mid-March, we've processed 1,800, and over 20 percent of those are being processed online, the, the point here that I wanted to make is that there's two things, is this will eventually save us staff time, and allow us to repurpose the use of our staff for other areas that are growing in our office, so we can become more efficient here, and reduce our staff time that's committed to dog licensing, and it also provides, you know, a, a way for the public to actually renew their, their licenses in a more efficient manner, that they're probably more used to, given today's technology, so we're, we're using it for the renewals right now, but we're planning to roll out eventually actual new license applications as well, and, and for that online, so this is a good, this is a win-win for our office in terms of efficiency, and also for the public. On the tax side, we're kind of doing something similar here, we're, we're working with a third-party vendor to provide tax statement printing and mailing services, right now, we do that through the state, but through this vendor who's established, has good reports, and is highly reviewed, we think we'll... has good reports, and is highly reviewed, we think we'll save over $10,000 a year in printing and mailing costs. And about a week's worth of staff time in November that we would spend, you know, folding and stuffing envelopes and mailing and doing all that extra work. This vendor at some point in the future will also give us the opportunity to migrate where we can to electronic tax statements. So you essentially get your tax statement in the future, we'll look into this, electronically, say through email. And that will eliminate the paper flow, lost mail, and all that sort of thing. Another point on tax, just want to mention, you've probably seen that out front, the west end of the building, worked with election staff and planning ahead for the November, we were originally planning ahead for the November election, and how are we going to handle the traffic overflow with the combination of the election and tax payments in November? And one of the solutions, or several of them that we've come up with, dealing with parking and everything, is to install a tax payment box and also a ballot box to drop ballots off at that Y there. And so we're pretty excited to see how that works out. We had no idea at the time we were talking about this, that there would, we didn't even know what a COVID-19 was, but it's also been helpful, at least on the tax side, to be able to collect tax payments in a physically distanced manner. Whitney tells me she's got a slick promotional video she's going to be putting out pretty soon that we'll be able to get the word out to the public.
I'm sure she does.
So one thought on that, yeah, making sure that there's a kind of a lock on the tax box during election season in case somebody puts something in the wrong box. I'm sure it may have been thought through already, but...
Yeah, that's a good point. We actually, we check it daily and we're expecting that there will be ballots in the tax box and we're working on arrangement to collect a commission from the clerk of those that we turn over.
I see. Just for a couple of days maybe to lock it up. And then also mosaic medical van is out there. Is that either going to be co-located or is that going to be parked in a different spot?
We, what I can tell you is that we've worked that out. I don't know the details of it, but they won't be there during the heavy season, at least. That's what I know about that. But I know we've got it worked out.
Yep, so just Wednesday afternoons, they put the medical van there?
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so jumping down to the budget to actuals report, just real quick on the general fund. Again, I just provide a big picture since the general fund's kind of one of our biggies, but we have year-to-date, we have spent, on the revenue side, I should say, not spent, we've received about 96% of our budgeted revenue. And just for comparative purposes, last year at this point, we had received 94%. So we've received a little bit more revenue as it relates to our budget this year than last year. So that's a good sign. Our revenue's always better than less. And overall, year-over-year collections year-to-date were up 2.6 million, about 8%. So 8% more revenue this time of year compared to last time. On the expense side, where expenses are up compared to budget, our expenses as compared to budget are 72%. This is slightly more than the 71% same time last year. And our expenses year-over-year comparison is 7% more. So 8% more revenue year-to-date, 7% more expense year-to-date. That's a good data point to monitor. Any questions on, any of that so far? Okay, go ahead.
No, I had no questions.
Okay, I'm looking at page 71, the FTE report. And just real quick, down here, you can see that we're at a 5.61%.
I don't have a page 71.
Excuse me?
I don't have a page 71.
This one, FTE report is where he's at. Page 42 on your packet.
Oh, okay.
Next page.
All right.
Yeah, we're seeing a packet page, probably covers up that number.
It covers up the other page. Thank you.
Okay, interesting. Okay, so 5.61% of our positions are unfilled. And last year at this time, it was 5.78%, so we're a little bit better than we were last year.
Or you could say worse.
Go ahead.
You could say worse. We, you know, I just got word that possibly per Money Geek, we're going to have unemployment in Ben Redmond up to 29,000. That's what's going to be on the news tonight, Greg. Channel 21.
I will be, I'll be sure to watch that.
Yeah, they say 29,000, 30% in our very wonderful community, so...
Yeah, those numbers don't shock me at all. They shock me, but they don't surprise me, I guess I should say that. One thing I'll tell, one thing I'd tell you is that the unfilled number, you can see we were hovering around 40, 54, and then it jumped up to 64 and then back down to 54. So there were major changes from last month, I guess I would point out, that we filled, there was an unfilled position in property management, that was James Lewis's position, that's been filled in March.
Kristi?
Say again?
Her name is Kristi?
Kristi, yeah. Yep. And we filled one position in the DA, so two of the filled positions that occurred, and then basically the bulk of the rest of the positions were filled in the sheriff's office. So you can see it goes from 21.75, unfilled positions to 13.75.
So he picked up eight people then?
Yep. And that puts the sheriff, you know, down, I guess it's lower, he's filled more positions and they, their unfilled rate is, well, it looks like it's the lowest it's been all year, so... So I'm going to assume that that's good. And moving into the financials, let me know if you have any questions on the summary. I just wanted to dive right into each of the departments, but we can go back and talk summary if you'd like to.
No, detail is always good.
Just department notes is fine with me. I know this is going to be kind of the transmission, transition month where the world hadn't changed drastically as of March 31st, so this will be...
Yeah, exactly. So not a whole lot in the general fund changed, the projected, I'll just drop to the bottom line here. The projected, the projected ending fund balance in the general fund now is about 12.6. Last month, it was 12.4, so not a significant change in the general fund. On the juvenile side, I don't believe there was any significant changes, let me just double check that. Nope, no significant changes in juvenile. Now TRT, as you know, there's some serious significant changes here, and I'll just walk through these with you. So the first number I want to point out is the projection of room taxes. It's the first line, projection of 7.266 million. So I'm sure you've heard a conversation, I probably have mentioned it before, but in projecting, best information we have to project the reduction in room tax revenue for the end of the year is that we will receive for the last three months of the year, 10% of what we had previously projected for the year. So that takes us from the prior month of $8.4 million down to the 7.3 million that you're looking at now. That's a significant change. The other changes here, for example, this COVID line, they, their allocation of TRT is a percent of total revenue received. So when the, when the revenue actually declines, so does their percentage. We've been working with them directly on helping explain this and understand it and make sure that we're all on the same page. But as of right now, this is a $110,000 reduction in what we're projecting, the TRT transmission to COBA from their original budget of $2,064,000. And the same explanation goes for these two items here, the transfer out to Farran Expo Reserve and the transfer out to Farran Expo. The $15,144 reduction in the transfer out is due simply because we have less money projected to come in at the top, therefore the amount that is allocated to reserves, which is what is left over, is also reduced. The amount going to Farran Expo is being reduced by 35,000 because the formula there is the 1% room tax, 70% of the 1% room tax gets allocated to Farran Expo. Components of that go to the fair and go to the RV park, and whatever is left over of that 7% goes to Farran Expo. So again, as the revenue declines, that 1, or the 7% of the 1% declines as well. So bottom line, we're looking at just less revenue coming in and less being allocated. All right, moving ahead, justice court. No significant change there. Sheriff's office fund balance here, there's not a significant difference at this point. That's about where it was last month. Okay, health services, I'm going to talk about this briefly, but this first sheet that you're looking at is the summary of all of health services, and I'm going to bypass this and go down to the detailed level, the components that make up health services. No real change in the administrative portion of health services, the admin, I'm going to move past that. Behavioral health, want to, thought like that, and... Let's see here. There's been a decline in behavioral health revenue. So if you look at this top line here, this variance of 2.028 million, that number last month was 1.6 million. So there's been a decline in, and I think, I think that's been, this has been communicated at the budget committee meetings, but a decline in the state grant, behavioral health, that difference is being made up by an increase in use of mental health reserves.
Well, they just got a CCVHC grant for this next couple of years also, so the numbers will still look different. And this is what I've seen over the years, is that the health department just kind of moves, you know, the finances move around quite a bit. Where's the money coming from? What are the available items for, you know, each service type? And is the state or the federal government our partner this year or last year or next year? So very dynamic in the health department.
Okay, on the public health side, I think I have one comment on that. And we've talked about this before, but due to the COVID-19, we're seeing revenue on the fee side down about $113,000. Okay, on to community development. So in community development, right now, the projections for permits, both building and electrical permits, they're projecting, and I'm looking at lines three and four, building safety and electrical. Their revenue projections in those two lines, they're projecting those down 25% based on projected declines in permitting activity. Those have declined more than they were last month. If you scroll further down and look at current planning, which has got the little C note here, $161,000 down, that reflects a 50% decline in land use applications. And essentially, to offset that, the transfer to reserves has been lowered. So you can see under transfer, the third line, transfers out to CDD reserves, has been reduced by 302.
302,000 is what you're saying.
Yes, and that keeps their fund balance at about where it was last month. Road fund, top line, major difference right there. You'll see the gas tax. This is based on some projections that I got from Chris. That's due to our, the numbers we're hearing are 40% or more decline in travel, which is going to relate directly to decrease in gas purchases and gas taxes that are paid at the pump and collected. So projecting almost a million-dollar reduction in the motor vehicle revenue there, that And that's, and just, that's being balanced by fund balance, by the way.
Greg, when does the gas tax come in? Is it like a two-month delay or how does that work with the state?
That is a good question. Chris, are you on the line? He's not on the line, but I will make a note and follow up with you. How's that sound?
Thank you. No, I was just wondering when we were going to, definitely more people are out there driving, but it's, I can imagine the month of April probably was significantly down.
Yeah, let me make a, let me make a quick note. Adults. Was there a question? So adult PNP, not much change from last month to this month. The revenue fund balance is still projected to be about 2.7 million. No change in the roads CIP. Or in the detail of the CIP. No change in solid waste, but I'd be surprised if we don't see the revenue go, the revenue actually increase, according to what I'm hearing from Tim. All right, I'm on the Farran Expo Fund 615. This will be worth a little bit of conversation. We've talked about this at past finance reports, but I'm going to go to the very bottom and you'll see that we're projecting about a $600,000 negative ending fund balance. And a couple of things I want to point out here, that's being driven by, largely by the top two revenue line items. You'll see events revenue and food and beverage revenue. Because we're not, because events have essentially been canceled for the remainder of the fiscal year, we're not, we don't have any event revenue and people aren't buying food and beverages. So this has really taken a sharp hit in terms of the revenue collected. Those are the two major revenue impacts at the fair. On the expense side, we've made some changes. You'll see them here under personnel. Essentially being able to reallocate some of the staff there, the maintenance staff, to other departments that needed the help anyway. And so it worked out to be pretty well, have these folks work in either sheriff's office or out in the roads. But they were going to hire anyway, so we were just able to repurpose that and take care of what we needed to in those departments and save some money at Farran Expo. And then a couple of other components, if you look down here at transfers, you'll see that there's a shortfall in room tax of $35,311. that there's a shortfall in room tax of thirty-five thousand, three eleven. This is the same number I referred to when we were looking at the Room Tax Fund. Room Tax Fund is sending thirty-five thousand dollars less to Fair and Expo. And then this one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar transfer is a reduction from budget at the County Fair, is budgeted as net proceeds that would come back to Fair and Expo. The actuals so far, which is the residual that the fair has left over, is only about two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's causing a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar decrease in actual sources of funds for Fair and Expo. So all of that, all of that adds up to about a six hundred thousand dollar shortfall. For a question?
No, the RV Fund is, that's somewhere else, isn't it? Yes, next page.
Next page.
Yep. Well, so I guess question for the Fair and Expo, the big picture, looks like some big choices have been made already, staff moved around. So, I mean, the reality is, yeah, it's an enterprise fund, its own profit and loss, these are the numbers as of March. Is this fully, kind of plugging in the numbers to the end of the year now, too? I mean, I guess that's, so then are some choices going to be, need to be made.
Yeah, Greg, let me jump in real quick, if you don't mind, that the, we have moved quite a bit of staff out. I mean, that's, it's a labor-intensive department, so that's the single biggest thing we could do to stop, you know, the bleeding, so to speak, with, in terms of uncompensated expense. So those folks will be there into next fiscal year, as long as it, you know, they aren't required, as long as events aren't happening at the Fair and Expo complex. So I really appreciate the, the receiving departments for their close examination of how they might use staff there, so including, you know, Sharon upstairs in our office. So we've, I think we've done what we could there. In terms of closing the gap, you know, we're going to need to, you know, balance the fund essentially by the end of the year. We can't, we can't carry a negative really into next year, so there are a couple of different options. You know, this is going to come up during budget hearing for sure, which will be, you know, either then or in June, when we're making the final decisions on how we, you know, fully respond to the loss of revenue in Fair and Expo. You know, we can do some things with unallocated TRT to try and make up the difference. You know, you do have general fund offset, we could pull some money out of Fair and Expo reserves. You know, we have a number of different options to sort of, you know, close that gap. You could do even sort of a bridge loan, if you will, from another, another source with the expectation that that will be paid back. So we'll, we will outline all the different options for you, so that you can, you know, make an informed choice on how, you know, how we, you know, fix it for now, and then, you know, what the timing is in terms of things ramping back up and returning to normal, so to speak, with respect to Fair and Expo next year.
We had some barrel races up there, social distancing barrel races.
Of course we can.
Yeah. And then the RV Park Fund.
Yes, okay.
So is RV Park Fund rolled into that other page right now?
It's on, it's on your next page.
Next page.
But is it rolled into the Fair and Expo Fund six fifteen? Or is it?
No, it's its own, it's its own fund.
Thank you.
And the major change here is your, it's your first resource line, RV Park fees, less than thirty-one days. So we revised that projection, and you can see over here that it's down almost forty-seven thousand dollars. That's the major change in that fund. In terms of projecting the ending fund balance, if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see that we're projecting a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar ending fund balance, which is still twenty-one thousand dollars better than our budget for this year. So as of right now, the projection for this year, that fund looks okay.
Oh, boy.
Risk management, no real change from last month. Got a seven point two million dollar projected ending fund balance. That fund is looking good. Down to health benefits. And the one major change from last month is if you look under requirements at the health benefits line, you'll see the projected expenses of twenty point two million dollars. This is about a million dollars more than what it was last month. Everything else is relatively the same in this fund, except that one line item. And I've been told that we, we have, we have a few very expensive claims right now for a few people. So that's what's driving that.
Well, that's.
Bottom line is, bottom line is, we still have a healthy ending fund balance, projected at fourteen million, but right now, it looks like it's a couple million dollars less, and will be at budget.
So the projection then is going to be one point six-six million over what we had, we had in our budget?
Correct.
At a minimum, probably.
Good to know, thank you.
Yep, and then there's no real change at all on the last page, which is Fund seven Any other questions on the financial report?
No questions, thank you very much for the walkthrough.
You're welcome.
I do like when you walk through it, page by page, Greg, because there's, you know, so many numbers, and especially now, we're going to be in so many departments going a different way.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I think that's a much more helpful way, and looking at.
I will just, I'll, I'll plan to do that in the future.
Okay, so the thirteen million that's supposed to go to PERS are funded by, what is it, May fifteenth, thirteenth?
Eighteenth.
Or is it the eighteenth? Okay, thirteen million's on the eighteenth. Are we, are we doing that, or do we have to vote on that, or is that a given?
You already gave, you already gave approval to do that. I have been waiting for the right time to do it, and I think when the market is where it is, is as best as it can be, given that it has to be in by the eighteenth. So the only other action that will be required from the board is a budget adjustment, and I will bring that sometime between now and the end of the year, that will just reflect the decision that was made back in December.
Okay, so Greg, listening to several people on the Business Channel this morning, they're talking about another crash, what are, I don't know what we're at today, twenty-four thousand or something? Is that going to, when we go into the state fund, is that where they are with the, I know they can do a lot more than we can with the money, but where, where do they go with it? Do you have any clue?
They, they are able to diversify their investments far beyond what, what we all see in the day-to-day financial market reports. They're invested in long-term investments, real estate, they just have access to things that we don't. The good news about that is, I think when the market had dropped twenty-five percent, the PERS Fund had only dropped seven percent, seven to eight percent. The other side of that is, when the market goes gangbusters, maybe gains twenty percent, the PERS Fund may only gain seven or eight percent. So the investment portfolio mix is much more diversified, which gives us much more stability and shelter from the day-to-day changes that you see in the stock market.
Okay, so what is the assumption, assumed rate of PERS? I know they were, they were matching California at one point in time, it was like seven point something. What are they assuming their rate of return is? Is, is that like a public document?
Yeah, it's seven point two-five percent.
Seven point two-five percent. And what did it make last year? Do you know?
Just a hair over, just a hair over fifteen percent.
Okay, so it actually made fifteen percent last year.
The real question is, what did it make the year before?
Right, what did it do?
And it was less than one percent the year before that.
Okay, that was like eighteen. Are we talking calendar or fiscal? What do you?
They do it on a calendar year.
Calendar?
Yeah.
All right.
And there's an offset when it affects our rates, but the point there is, the, the fund made almost zero in one year, and then fifteen percent the next year. And what they're really projecting is, what's this going to do in the long run? And if you want to use those two numbers and divide them in half.
Yes.
Come up with, you know, seven percent or eight percent.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, interesting. Thank you. Thank you very much, Greg. Okay, so we need to go back to our draft reopening plan.
Commissioners, the draft document that was provided to you today includes some minor updates from the document that you looked at yesterday, that draft. There's been some formatting changes, and I would say the bulk of the updates to this version that you have in front of you today are outlined in the sector-specific guidance and the input that we've received from the local cities and chambers. So that's the, the second half of the document. Those are the substantive changes that are reflected. I'm happy to try and capture edits and additional thoughts the board may have as it pertains to this document, and also it looks like Tom may have some, some input on this as well.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if the board would like a, kind of a description of how these different sections are set up. We, we stopped yesterday before we got to the business section, we were kind of going through them, but I can, you know, beginning with the business sector guidance on page seven of the draft, I could kind of give you a summary of what the intent is there, and then, then explain the, you know, how the business input is incorporated into this document.
Okay.
Okay?
Page seven, thank you for the numbers.
Yeah.
That helps.
Little changes.
Looks better than my little number on the bottom, thank you.
So, beginning with that paragraph labeled, labeled business sector guidance on page seven, really, the, the intent there is to acknowledge that we're not doing this in a vacuum, that we've, you know, tapped into efforts that were really already going on. We didn't cause these different efforts to occur. The Chambers, Visit Bend, Edco, we're all, you know, have been in direct contact all the way through the, you know, the pandemic crisis with businesses. And so when we begin to look at opening up strategies, or what the needs are from these different sectors, you know, that work, that, those conversations were already occurring. So we attempted, as I said, tap into that, we requested direct input in writing from those different sectors, and so this paragraph just kind of reflects that, and, and, and is an introduction to this following section. So I'll come back to what that truly means once we get a little bit later in the report. So the phased reopening strategies is really, you know, just acknowledgement that we are, we're not jumping full in with both feet on a reopening, we're not throwing the doors open, I heard that term used, that we are, you know, attempting to, you know, do this in phases. And we'll have a discussion in a little bit on, you know, what we would like to propose in terms of how those phases apply here in Deshute County. So, you know, we, we have, I believe, some flexibility to, and this is our proposal, this is our plan, it's not, we don't need to follow a script or a recipe precisely, we're following the framework, not necessarily the, all the precise ingredients. So that's what that paragraph touches on. Encouragement of alternative business practices. So basically, that is an acknowledgement that, you know, businesses, you know, depending on their type, have learned, those that have remained open, have learned a lot, you know, over the last six weeks about, you know, safe practices, safe protocols. So this acknowledges that change, and basically, there's Commissioner Henderson? I'll pause there, he's seated.
Wouldn't you have a question about banks? You know, that banks are now closed, and you only can go through drive-through? Is that pretty consistent with all of them?
That's not something that I have personal knowledge of, I don't know if, and it's not necessarily something that I saw reflected in any of the.
I know, I, I didn't either, I just, one of our Deshute County residents said, could you please get the banks to open up again? They were in a bank line for like, you know, an hour.
That's interesting.
I know. It's just part of, you know, when you do have to go to the bank.
Right, we can definitely look into that and see what.
I mean, I would think they could initiate a lot of social distancing, I mean, when you're standing in line and all that, that they could actually incorporate those things and open up again.
So Commissioner Henderson, we just.
We're on page eight.
We just began talking about the, on page seven, the paragraphs that begin discussing the framework for how businesses are incorporated into this document. So I've discussed the first three guidances, just sort of the, acknowledging the fact that we've reached out to efforts that were already going on in traded service and tourism-related businesses. The second one is just basically acknowledging that we're, you know, we're following the framework of phased, you know, grouping businesses into phases, but not necessarily, you know, the exact list, you know, that other counties might be using, that we are using, applying our own discretion to that. And then encouragement of business practices is just acknowledging the things that businesses have learned over the last six weeks, and encouraging their continuance, you know, as we begin looking at our reopening strategy. So with that, the next paragraph, Tourism Mobility Considerations, so this notes the efforts that, you know, we have taken here locally with the stay-at-home order, and, you know, acknowledges that tourism is certainly an enormous part of our local economy in central Oregon. And despite that, you know, in an effort to, you know, keep the community safe, we did do the stay-at-home order. It mentions the City of Bend encouragement in terms of that, and, you know, just the fact that, you know, whatever we do going forward will also be important in how, you know, a reopening looks in our county.
So in that particular paragraph, you know, there were some things that we weren't sure of. Have Bet Redmond, Lepine, or Sisters said anything about travel here or tourism? If they haven't, we ought to just take it out, I mean, that's why.
Nathan had provided feedback on that section, that to his knowledge, no other cities did that, and that the reference to the airport in that sentence, that the airport was primarily signage.
I would just change that to signage, I was, Redmond Airport signage, because I talked to Zach Bass yesterday, that, that's what he said, is that they just put the signs up, and, but it isn't really a policy they put in place, or not enforcing anything, it's just saying, we want you to, we hope you quarantine, and it's more of a aspirational.
Okay, so the next paragraph.
What does it mean in the next sentence, though, Tom, monitoring key communities that travel to Deshute County? Do you mean people from key communities, or what does that mean?
Key, I believe, notes that communities, other communities that have had more, larger outbreaks. You know, whether that's out of state, from.
So monitoring, like hotspot communities, is, is that what you're talking about, about key, monitoring?
Well, yeah, I mean, in, it's a, it's a consideration, you know, next week, we're going to talk about a potential, about the stay-at-home order that's in place here. So I imagine as part of that conversation, you're going to want, you know, all the information you can gather about, you know, where people come from. So I imagine as part of that conversation, you're going to want, you know, all the information you can gather about, you know, where people come from. We've heard anecdotal evidence the last few weeks that there continues to be quite a few people from both Washington State and California and some of our resorts. So to the extent that that's important for you to know in considering whether or not to lift the order, I think that's what that sentence gets at.
But you see what I'm saying? Communities don't travel here. People do. So it doesn't.
Oh, yes.
Monitoring key, or people from key communities or key areas or?
I, I'm, I'm with you.
Travelers from.
Travelers from key communities.
That'd be good. That's probably more, more accurate.
But the very last line, but our capacity is based more on our permanent resident population. Well, if somebody owns a house here, they're paying for the sheriff. You know, that's in your property taxes. They're paying for 911. They're paying for a lot of services even though they don't live here permanently. So what was the point of that sentence, that phrase?
Actually, it's just the reverse. They, they pay more taxes and take less services.
Right. Yes.
The capacity has to do with our response capacity in terms of the pandemic and, and first responders, PPE, that sort of thing. And that's been based pretty much on our static population, on our, you know, the people, our resident population. So if there was, if, if a large increase or going back to more normal, quote unquote, the numbers of people in the county, that that would, that additional capacity isn't necessarily reflected in our current analysis by the EOC folks.
So I think there's a proposal, I, I like the sentence, monitoring key communities that travel to Deshute County and taking proactive measures will be critically important to manage possible disease transmission. I mean, that, that seems like the right statement. You know, if, if there's activity in the West Coast and we know Seattle, Portland, and San Francisco, or the, you know, there'll be triggers when, when news happens somewhere else to think about how that may affect us.
But if we put a clause on that last sentence, you know, if not measured, which has a double meaning, if not measured, this non-resident population can significantly affect demand for services. But our capacity is not, is based more on our permanent resident. Our, the way we stand up, our capacity is measured more on permanent residents. Is that what we're saying? I don't know who wrote this either, so I don't know what the content was.
This paragraph was originally, came from the document that Nathan drafted, so.
Oh. So you see this problems we're having with that sentence?
I do, and I think we can clean that up and bring it back to the board in a way that might be just a little bit cleaner.
So my suggestion would be is if not measured, this non-resident population can significantly affect demand for services while our capacity is based more on our permanent.
If not, could you explain what you mean, if not measured? What are yours?
Well, I meant double A. If it's not measured, mean, you know, you do things in a measured way. So if not ma, if not kind of monitored and measured, and then also measured in a paid attention to type of meanings. That's kind of what I mean by the word measured.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, it could be used more literally too, or if we're going to
Yeah, well.
Put a clicker at the edge of the county and count you coming in. So I'm just making sure we're clear on what measure means.
Well, that, that could be too. I mean.
Ah, and I'm not, yeah.
So we're talking about taxation without representation for those people that are paying their property taxes. Because they are, you're right, they're paying more because they, they aren't here. But maybe, you know, to, they want to come to their house two months in the summer or something.
Well, I, I don't think, yeah, I'm not trying to deny anybody coming.
Right.
I'm just saying, we should pay attention to the group because of, of travel has been indicated as a positive spreader. I'm very concerned with us giving the wrong messages, or, you know, over time about our, the part of tourism has been the, that's how we've replaced the timber economy, was the tourism economy, which we thought was immune to all, all things bad, so.
So, you know, back to the beginning on this tourism mobility considerations, I'd propose the first sentence changed a little bit. So instead of influenced by tourism, I'd say Deshute County's economy has a strong tourism component.
That's good.
Influence, sounds like it's coming our way if you like it or not.
Which we welcome, really.
Yeah, but I mean, it's got, there's a strong component. There always has been.
Yes, I'm aware of some tourists that have been here, and they love it. I'm like.
That happens every time. That's the problem.
I know, I know. They are very happy here, so, you know, they, they were sheltering in place. They were sheltering in place where they drove from, so that's what you do.
Well, you know, a person that has a second home has the same view as the second home as we do of our backyard or our shop or it's just been one more part of their, their footprint, their living footprint. So they, they do, okay.
And so then, there's also a large number of second homes belonging to people in larger urban areas. We might just say large number of second homes and just leave it at that. I mean, we don't need to say anything about who's coming from where. I mean, it's just a fact. Second homes could be owned by anyone.
Both, really, there's two thoughts there. One is there's a large number of second homes. The second is a large number of those second homes are from people that live in large urban areas that might make us more susceptible.
Yeah, there's a statement there.
Thoughts there. I don't know.
Yeah, we could break that sentence off. That would be good.
Many of these belong to people that live in larger urban areas.
Yeah, because that is the, the issue, you know, showing up from downtown Seattle and knowing that there, you know, has been activity or whatever.
Or Santa Monica. Oh, gosh. So reinstitute?
Yeah, so that paragraph obviously says if, you know, if there's a resurgence, you know, then we're going to address it. That we would do what we have to locally, whether that's reinstituting bans or, you know, working with the, however this plays out in terms of a county, county-by-county reopening. If that works the same way in terms of a county-by-county reinstitution of a closure. But this, based on the monitoring that we speak to in the previous paragraph, that if there is a resurgence, that we'll respond to it appropriately.
So what we could do, this was based on what Nathan had said in his comment, is after that sentence says metrics could be based on number of cases, average new, new daily cases and/or hospitalizations. We expect guidance from the governor's office on this issue is what he basically said. He thinks that they'll tell us what that would be. So I, I think that'd be good to put in there. Anticipate guidance from the governor's office on this.
Okay, so then we began getting into the, and I've, I tried to sort of split this up and, because we got some really good feedback from Edco on traded sector employment, how they have responded and what they intend to continue to do. So that, I made that one section, even though they really weren't closed to a large extent by the governor's order, they've responded extensively. So I thought that was important to note in here. And then the second section is, and, and we can come back and go through each, each one of these. But the second section is sort of the service-based employment, you know, the subject of the focus groups. Then there's a section on, on tourism and outdoor recreation specifically, and finally, a, a section on transit. So those would be kind of major headings, A, B, C, and D, within the business sector considerations. I just thought that flowed a little better, but whatever the, the board's will is.
So, so did you think, Tom, we would just, it looks like you're just going to attach these things. Noticing, Harney County's yesterday, they just literally said, here's the protocol, here's the, they have like three lines as opposed to three pages, and so.
And that's a good question. We, we actually went back and forth on that. In fact, in one draft, we had them just sort of copied in there as part of our document, and then we kind of split them back out. So we could do it either way. You know, I'm a little sensitive to, you know, sort of, you know, one benefit to having them as attachment is that we acknowledge the partners who have done the work and contributed to this. Obviously, the advantage of incorporating them is that it, it sort of flows better and sort of makes it, makes it our own. So whatever the, kind of the board's, you know, thinking is there, we could do that. And by the way.
Were you thinking of these two documents? I mean, is this, here's the Edco and here's the chamber?
Yeah, there's the Edco, and then there's two parts to the chamber document. There's the one that we got last week that I think you have in your hand, and then that one that we got this week. We've got a separate document from Visit Bend.
Visit Bend, yes.
That would be, I, I should mention also, I didn't, I didn't before, and I apologize, for each of these sector, we've got Katie Brooks is on standby if you'd like to hear from her directly or, you know, have her be part of the conversation.
I would, because I, I actually think the most effective would be a shorts. If I'm sitting over in Salem and I'm getting 36 county plans, I'm reading the ones I can, their simplest first almost. So I almost wonder if we shouldn't have, and maybe Katie's the one that does it, but somebody that summarizes the gist of the restarts of these different sectors, and then attach the thinking and the who did it behind it so that the, it looks like we dotted all our i's and, you know, crossed our t's. That, that's my first thought. I, I don't know how long it'll take. Maybe Katie can share that with us.
Okay, and also Roger, I think is listening, that we've, we're a little bit later than what we, this, our agenda showed. But we can check on that, or I can get ahold of him if you'd like to talk about traded sector and, and then Kevney on the, on the outdoor recreation side, so.
Okay.
Well, so we saw the governor's office provide guidance, draft guidance. There's pages of that. So that's kind of bullet points coming down from, Annette Leeb had sent that to us. And we have these groups that are coming together in the industries, you know, personal services, retail, some of the different things that have already been talked about, and traded sector, manufacturing. So connecting those two is going to be the, the right place to be, you know. If the governor's office is going to finalize something, do we fit right into that? We don't need to answer all those in a document. We can probably say, our intention is to fit into the guidance as provided by the state, and this is how we've been preparing to do that. So just like you're saying, we don't need a ton of words around it. We can just kind of point to, these two are talking, and we're going to make sure we're in alignment. I don't, yeah, so just some sentences.
Yeah.
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
Pretty simple for, particularly Harney County seemed really simple. I don't know if we can reduce ours to that. I, do you envision us being able to do that in a day or so, or?
Yeah.
Committee of us or something trying to hammer it out? Maybe it's Katie and, and somebody from her side of things on those industries. Maybe Roger on, a couple of people just saying, let's, how, how are we going to summarize this?
Yeah, well, and Annette Leeb, I mean, because if she's directly involved getting this information disseminated, if we can have a little roundtable on that and just say, okay, here's the section.
Okay, well, I think what, given that, what I, what I'd suggest is that, you know, we would probably, for each of these sectors, we'd maybe do the first ourselves or, and, and then do a back and forth with them directly, so we have something.
That's going to be a lot faster.
It captures their, their intent, that we could then resubmit to the board for each of these that, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't attach their submittals. We'd have them handy and, but we'd, we'd provide sort of a paragraph or two on each one that, that, you know, provides just a, you know, or a written summary of the efforts that have been undertaken in each of these business sectors.
That's fine.
Can we hear from Katie about her thoughts on this, or?
Sure.
Katie available?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking now. But I just, and I'll.
Email or text? Okay.
Okay, so you're texting her and just asking her?
They've just done a tremendous amount of work. I would think they probably have an opinion about how we package it.
So while we're getting that going, I got a couple of thoughts, just kind of other things to add. Maybe closer to the front or, you know, healthcare system capacity, something. You know, Dr. George and epidemiologist work and understanding the, this virus. It was mentioned, you know, low inoculation opposed to high inoculation, maybe that's the two trends we're seeing.
Where are you?
Uh, this is just information. It's not in the document yet. That's my point. I want to add, add some concepts.
What page?
What page you are on, added on?
Yeah.
Page four would be healthcare system capacity. So a paragraph or something in here possibly. But, you know, what we know today, you know, because it'll be different a couple of months from now, but what we're, kind of the assumption, like the whereas clauses, maybe that's what I'm referring to. You know, whereas we, we've seen, you know, 25 something original cases that, that, you know, more than doubled for the, just like the statement that Dr. George showed us, more than doubled by, you know, not understanding what was going on, close personal, you know, housing or whatever. And then the second wave, we're thinking, we're just seeing, you know, the residual activity, you know, just kind of the facts as we think we know them. It'd be good to see them on paper, and, you know, knowing that it'll be interesting to see relative to what it looks like six months from now. So kind of an epidemiology paragraph. We could also, another.
Kind of, let me try to rephrase what you're saying to make sure I understand. Try to say we should have something in there about what we're, what it is we think we're preparing for, so to speak, or something like that.
Well, and what we think just happened, you know, you know, the, the spike of cases was, you know, however many half or, I don't know. What was the most we ever saw? I guess I didn't.
Five in one day.
Yeah, so five was the most. But, you know, but that was, yeah, there was a spike in there a little bit, and now, yeah, we're down. So just a little bit of a paragraph about that specific information. Because it'd be great for citizens to read too, to see what, oh, that's what happened.
And actually, the ventilators are on order. They have not arrived. And actually, you do, in a lot of cases, you don't want to be put on a ventilator. So that we have that, we've purchased them, but they're not here yet. So that par, that last sentence, I mean, it looks like we're really trying to be very thorough.
Well, this is a draft, and it's not going to be final until all those things are true, so.
Well, no, we'll be waiting forever for the ventilators.
Yeah, so we may have to review that.
Yeah.
So that's one idea. I just.
I mean, we are waiting for the ventilators. They're on backorder, and I don't think Nathan ever gave us.
Don't we just add that clause, which says, which are on backorder or something?
If we have to, yeah.
Well, I'm not against that paragraph. If you want to come up with it, with what it is and where it goes, I'm, I'm not against that.
Okay.
What did, I missed the first part of this. What, what are we going to, we got to fill in those X-boxes. What are we going to do about those?
H5.
We just got to make a stab at it. I just, on this federal phone calls on, I wanted to listen to hear what the latest was, because it was all these different people. Last person was HHS and they had somebody from FEMA. They were talking about 2% of the population needing to be tested. And I don't know if that's per month, maybe? Does that, has anybody heard that number or? So I, so 2% of 4 million is 80,000. And so that would be 20,000 per, per week. And we're 5% of 20,000, whatever that is. Isn't that, am I doing my math right?
Yeah.
You think so, huh?
Maybe.
Kind of rounding up and down, but.
It's 1,000 per week. That's more than we're talking about. But this, the federal call was very optimistic about how much testing capacity we're all going to have. It's like we're going to have tests for like millions, 10 million, 20 million, and they were just huge numbers.
Of course we are.
But I'm all right if the, we put in the numbers that, wasn't, Georgia's number was 10 per 30,000 or, what was it? 15 per 30,000. It got us to 600 if we say we're
Yes.
200,000. It gets us to 5.
Was it 30 for 10,000?
570. What's that?
30 for 10,000.
Isn't that what he said?
Yes, that was the number originally.
I don't know if it's true, but that's what we've been talking about.
Well, it's just a way to.
But I don't think we should round it up to 60, 600. I think we should keep it at, if it's about 190, we should keep it at 570.
197 was the number he was.
He said it was 191, and then he rounded it up to 200.
I, he, he sent me the email on it. It was like 197.
Well, if you want to do more tests.
Well.
I'm worried about getting, being able to do 600. I'm worried about getting, being able to do six hundred a week and whether.
Five hundred and fifty-seven a week, you know, I don't.
Seven hundred and seventy.
It'll be interesting to, because, I mean, industry could spin up and we could have that kind of capacity. Uh, you know, if a lab in in Hillsborough and the University of Washington are doing those PCR tests, we have these quick tests that are going to be coming out, that, we may see that number in the dust way real quick. Or if we can't get to it, it'll be good to know that, oh, this is harder than we thought.
But yesterday on TV, there was several people they interviewed about how nobody was going to the testing centers because nobody wants to get tested, really. So they'd have like fifteen a day going to a testing center when they thought they were going to get fifty or a hundred or something. So getting six hundred people to show up somewhere.
Now we have to give away five dollar Amazon cards to go get tested.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, we're not going to give away Amazon cards.
Why don't we just put in?
Local coffee shop ones, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Some local. Yes.
So can you just confirm that?
Well, we're in that same.
Three, so we should, you know, whatever the state's goal is, I, but I think we should put six hundred tests per week and that's what Dr. Conway had really suggested and I know the state has three thousand swabs on order that are supposed to arrive the first of May. And those are the quick turnaround tests where they can actually do it for patients, for procedures and get the answer that day, I believe.
I just don't want to promise something that's really hard for us to make, but.
Well, we'll tell all our family they have to go in and get tested every week, you know.
And then would the board like to take out the sentence that directly follows that, the previously in Deschutes County, two hundred to three hundred tests collected each week? Would you like that to stay in or to come out?
Well, Nathan wanted it out, I think because it sounded like it was too low, but I I was going to put it in because, or wanted it in because it shows we've already done half that, so we're already, so I don't, I have no.
Remember, we were right in the middle of all the the counties in Oregon. We were six, tied for sixteenth and seventeenth per our population, per testing. So we weren't at the top like a lot of people would love, but we weren't at the bottom either. So we have done significant testing here. So I I think leaving it is probably a good idea.
Okay, perfect.
Well, it must be thirty per that, ten thousand.
Nathan's notes say thirty per ten thousand.
Yeah, thirty per ten thousand, test per, per week and that would make us six hundred tests per week. It's a lot.
Well, a lot of people I've talked to, I've asked them to be tested, so.
No, but do they want us, now that they're healthy again, do they still want to be tested? So I'm worried about. So where are we on the, getting back to the stuff we were at? Did we hear from Katie or?
Yeah.
Yeah, she said she'd be on in fifteen minutes and that was ten minutes ago, so.
Okay.
Okay, then page five. Has Nathan given us an idea of what this is going to cost? And what are we going to, the inventory? It was what we were talking about this morning, you know, what are the goals that we need to have?
I did take notes during that conversation this morning, was planning to plug them in. I don't know that I heard all of those categories covered, but I can definitely work with Nathan offline to verify what I heard and try to track down what wasn't discussed specifically this morning, if that works.
And you'd probably have a good idea on costs too, what he's been paying for, like the last order.
Okay.
I mean, hopefully it's.
He'll fill in those blanks. I like, even if we end up not putting in what the hospitals got or they don't want to put in, I I would like them to put in their hospital beds and stuff. I think that's, would be great. But even if they don't put in like their PPE, I'm, I think it'd be great if we put ours in, our cash. That would be good. Speaking of cost, I wonder on that one where we said it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand for housing, what, couldn't it be, the estimated cost to accomplish this is up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand? Is that, would that make sense?
Right. Up to sounds a lot better. So what about the evacuation and sheltering plan? Actually, I'm on page seven.
Yeah.
Where is that at? I thought we had one.
We do, we, it's on page seven.
No, it says not yet completed.
We'll just take it out and it is.
I thought we had books on this, I mean.
So I took out the word adapted. I don't really like saying we're, of all counties in an ecosystem, but I put in fire risk ecosystem.
And I can definitely revert that change back.
To just fire risk ecosystem?
Yes.
I mean, we're just saying we have a lot of fire risk over here. I just think we just take out not yet completed. I, we have all sorts of things for that.
We have plans for all kinds of communities.
Maybe he's thinking we should have flushed, you know, explain it more, but I think it's good, just with what we got. People know we we're into the fire business. Don't you think?
Nate, can you take that out?
I I just did, yes.
Is that okay?
Um, I will definitely make that change here and then just follow up with Nathan to get an understanding of what that note meant and if it was maybe, it might have been an an early note that just didn't come out, but I'll just verify what he might be thinking there.
Well, and awaiting the approval is the same. I'll take that out because we're going to.
It will be approved.
We're going to do it, it just was the wording today. So Tom, was it your idea that we put in the ones? What's the difference between in back in business sector consideration? So we have the traded sector as a, as an item and we have service employment and then we go through that and then we go to phase one businesses, which is redundant. I mean, wouldn't we somehow merge those together and have just one line, outline of that stuff?
The idea was just service employment was the heading and then business, the the three tiers of business is a subsection within that, that service employment category. So the first part was to list what they are, you know, acknowledge the governor's categories that were in the slide deck and then we would, you know, there's, would insert language and this is where we would talk about, you know, summarize the focus group effort that has been conducted in these various industries and their similarities overlap amongst them, express what the concerns that were heard from the businesses and then what our plan is to address each of those concerns and needs and asks that came from the, from the businesses. And then the phase one, two and three, that's, again, that's the opportunity for you three to adjust what types of business you believe ought to be in each of those three categories. Commissioner Adair had a couple that she thought ought to be in, in.
I put in church and faith facility.
Yeah, and I think each of you might have some input on where you, where you think, you know, what businesses ought to be included there.
And Commissioners Katie Brooks was, she's on the line now, she's.
Okay.
Um, just real quick before we get to that, on, on the discussion up above, well, she's listening too, that didn't, didn't the chamber had, do a work group on personal services instead of prof, or did they do one on professional and personal?
It was really personal services, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was thinking it was.
Yes, Katie, wasn't it?
It got the expert.
Yeah, it's, it, personal, professional services. So it was hair care providers to all sorts of self-care, personal care type of of businesses, so salons, a lot of those folks were in attendance. And we had a mix of other folks that were unclear on on what category they belonged to, massage therapists, as as well as some other folks that provide different types of settings for for kids, for outdoors. There were just folks that that came on, it was a a bit of a mix. But I think when you look at the professional and personal services, it was primarily folks that interact with people in a very close setting.
So what we're discussing, Katie, was including in our plan that goes to the governor, the guidelines that you've come up with and we were discussing, should we attach the whole work package you've come up with or could we simplify that into, some of the plans we've seen have kind of short discussions in each category or each sector and then we could attach this as an additional item at the back if they want it, if they wanted to look at it further, but that was kind of the question we were having.
And let me paraphrase to see if I understand. So the question is, how, how do you want us to get the input back to the governor? Do you want it to be more specific or less?
Katie, I think what the idea was is that Whitney and I would work with you and, or you and Carolyn and Chuck to kind of summarize what you've provided to us in a, in maybe a couple paragraphs. One that that summarizes what you heard from the businesses and then another one that outlines what our efforts will be, shall be, to address those concerns that you heard and that we'd kind of, we'd take a first crack and 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 send it back and forth to ensure that what, we're not saying anything that goes outside the lines of what you heard and that what we say is, you know, that basically they were in alignment with each other.
That sounds like a great approach and I, and I might add, in addition to these workshops that we've held, Visit Bend has held them as well as EDCO and we can aggregate all of this input, including some other meetings that I've been attending that are much larger with with a whole bunch of folks in those fields and take a look at what you put together and collaborate on, on that feedback, especially now since the governor's come out with some draft protocols. We've had quite a bit of reaction to them on on some of the challenges that will, for example, restaurants just this morning and and retail. And I think if we could work together on aggregating the input and looking at that side by side and the the draft guidelines, I think we can come up with something pretty comprehensive. And one thing I might add that has really been apparent to me in that when you talk to people who own restaurants and retail outlets and hairdressers, et cetera, the actual practical, on the ground implementation of some of these requirements is pretty, is pretty difficult. For example, just this morning, talking to some folks in the restaurant industry where they're supposed to stay six feet away from their customers, it's going to be impossible to serve food that way. This one example of some of the conundrums that are coming out of these guidelines. So my recommendation and observation would be humbly that there is some latitude for change management here. As we try to practically implement some of this on the ground, some of it's going to work and some of it is not. And we have to have some sort of a channel of information exchange as we experiment with this stuff over time, what's working and what's just simply impossible. So we have some sort of of leverage or ability to give input to things as we are all trying to do our best.
Commissioners and Katie, if I might, the, so in in reading the list of of concerns that that each of those businesses had, many of them, you know, as you said, Katie, are kind of, what do we do here? You know, how can we, how can we approach this? What's our setup? What are the right practices? And in my mind, that means consultation with our environmental health or our health staff to provide, you know, advice, tailor do a business on best practices and suggestions and and guidance. So, I mean, there's not, there's not going to be a way that we can go point by point eat, through each one of those in a summary document back to the governor, but the, basically the, the action that the county would take, you know, kind of across the board is to, is to have resources, staff, whether that's brochures or videos or one-on-one consultations with the businesses to be able to, you know, use their expertise to address their concerns and provide that advice so that they can, you know, open in the, you know, the the safest way possible.
Katie, it was really interesting, about two weeks ago, I discovered that restaurants weren't required to wear gloves or masks. The state has not made that rule. And so when I was out picking up food one day and I noticed that, you know, all the people that were working there, nobody had any protective wear on and I was really shocked. So, you know, putting down a lot of rules that really can't be implemented doesn't really make sense, but to me, wearing gloves and a mask does. So, you know, keeping it basic.
And that's included, I saw it included in in the rules this morning, so I think.
Well, I would hope it would have been.
Yeah, yeah. And then it gets to the issue of of where's the supply chain for PPE and sanitation equipment, which is something we're working with your fabulous staff and those around the region on identifying a list of suppliers. So we're looking at that end already.
Yeah, gloves are, according to Nathan this morning, gloves are supposed to be accessible, you know, rather easily, but then it's the mask issue and, you know, do you wear your mask all day long? Like the checker at Market of Choice last night had had her mask on for eight hours and she goes, oh, my gosh, I cannot wait to get out of here and get this mask off. So, you know, but they're, they're following the rules. I mean, that they have actually set up, you know, during this transition period.
So another thing that I can think of that would be really useful from the county, and and maybe this is is also from the state, I'm not sure, but the need for really clear communications. And that means here are the expectations of you as an employee and working in this particular setting, whatever it happens to be, and here are the requirements from the customer, because it really is a joint effort. And it's been my experience that a lot of people out there have a lot of different types of information, so whatever we can do to post the expectations is going to be helpful for everybody involved. So there isn't any argument of folks coming into a retail establishment without a mask on and if if the requirement is for you to have a mask on or to stay six feet away from the person in front of you, to have something to point to as a business owner saying, here are the requirements that have been handed down to us and we all have to abide by it. It's not fun, but here it is. Just makes it more comfortable for everybody to get used to the new normal and to have some backup in their expectations of what they're asking and what they're asking of their customers.
So Katie, what was the, the governor came out, or is that something that came out today?
The draft rules came out, I believe, yesterday for several sectors and I'm happy to forward those on. We were just discussing them in a meeting this morning. They're for retail, restaurant, healthcare. There was one other category. They're, they're issuing them as quickly as possible to take input on them. They're finalizing them and issuing them.
Child, childcare maybe? Was childcare one of them?
Yes.
Personal services?
Healthcare.
Not.
I don't remember seeing those yet.
So.
I gotta look, I gotta look.
If those, if they put out the guidance, wouldn't we just say, we're going to do what they're guiding unless we really can't do it? I mean, wouldn't that be the, if we're, or you're saying there's quite a bit of pushback that they really don't take into consideration the sector's challenges?
It's guidance that I think will be really useful as you develop and you can use it as as the template. I'll tell you that some of it, there's a lot of of pushback on it and what's going to be the trick is to identify what is pushback that's just because it's hard and what is the pushback because it is impossible. And that's what we're trying to work through right now. And I think working with Tom and and your team, we can sift through these guidelines and figure out what makes the most sense and what's really going to be too restrictive or impossible to do and and try and find those areas of collaborative problem solving.
Yeah.
But we have some information from the state that we can start with.
So my suggestion would be is that some group convene with the, with Katie in the chamber and whoever she thinks we need to have and we take a run at this and see what we come up with and and bringing in the old, or what we've have here and what the governor said and see if we come up with something in the next day or so. and see if we come up with something in the next day or so, next two days or whatever we can do. It's, because really this is part of, we've got several keys to getting through the, getting a proposal into the governor. This is a big one. The other one is getting the okay from this hospital on surge capacity in some kind of written form and a couple of other things. But those are really the big, we're pretty close on a lot of the other stuff, we think, from our, that we've been working on. But when you think of that, we get some group together and we could even get back down to ready to look at it if we want.
Yes, we could, we should.
Yeah, I, I, that sounds like a good plan. And, and, you know, with Katie and whoever from your side, whether that's Carolyn or Chuck or anybody else I know, I believe EOC staff, if that was Emily Freeland perhaps from our health department, who's in the EOC, I think was either participated in some of those focus groups or has been sort of point on, you know, the business side of things with respect to future planning. So I think that, and then, you know, Whitney and I, we can sort of gather together and, or virtually and, and, you know, kind of rough out what this would look like. And then draft it up and have it back to the board by hopefully close the business tomorrow. If, if there's capacity on your side, Katie, sometime tomorrow to, to do that.
Yeah, we'll do whatever we need to do to help.
Personally, I would see as I'd kind of try to come up with five rules per, per sector or something. I mean, some, because we're going to get feedback from the state. I don't know, we've, several have already turned in their plans. But, you know, this is a kind of a crap shoot about what we're gonna, what's going to work or what they're going to prove, I think, unless we have inside knowledge, which we don't.
So Whitney, what about the plan that we have to date that is applicable to the hospital? Does the hospital want to see all of these documents too? I mean, or can we get something to the hospital?
No, I think, I think we can just get them our, our stuff. I don't think we have to get them the industry sector stuff.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I think definitely the first chunk of it as a starting point would be great. And then we can have conversations with their staff and their team as to, you know, if they have interest in the broader document. But we can definitely finalize.
I mean, because I think that we should like, you know, we, we can't just give it to them at two and say, oh, please.
Yes, I totally agree.
Give them, give them more time to take a look at it.
We'll work kind of with the first half of the document and the EOC to get, fill in those blanks, then communicate that draft over to the hospital team and then work on the second piece at the same time.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
I know, because I think it's, you know, it's all got to come together.
Well, and they, they, it doesn't really matter what their opinion is about restaurants. I mean, they're, they're in the, they're in the hospital business. So, you know, they may be interested, but.
No, I did, that's why I think it's important to get their, their side of their, yes. Their side of their, and anything else that we can do to, you know. Thank you for your thousands of hours and being here and, you know, pulling this through. It's too bad the governor's office didn't give us that information like about a week ago. But, you know, I guess she did tell us she was going to give it to us this week, right? Didn't she?
Yeah. Yeah, it is very hot off the presses. And I am happy to share this information. And I think it will be really helpful in starting that conversation and, and finalizing where you folks want to land. It's pretty dang comprehensive, but definitely not, not done. And I think that the local input will be very useful. So I'll work with Tom and, and his team and, and we'll hammer something out for you to take a look at.
Hammer, I love that. That's a good term.
Question of the commissioners, were we able to talk to Joe Sluka this week? I did that.
Well, I did yesterday.
Yeah, good, making sure we all, I did.
What, maybe we should check our notes about what we all learned. I think I, I, Tom and I talked to him first, I think, and what, I was trying to understand what their plan was for surge and how they were doing it. And they said they had three tiers of surge that they're preparing for. And then there's a, like a variation of those three if you have elective surgeries going at the same time. And at one point, and Tom, you say if you think I'm saying it wrong, but at one point, Dr. Absalon actually said, we think we have enough capacity for the, all the surges. Doctor, Mr. Sluka had not been so bold as to say that. But I, I heard Dr. Absalon say that.
Yeah, I think they said we have a three-tiered surge capacity plan and that it's mature, I think was his exact word, which I took to mean that they're ready to go if it, if it happens.
Well, they're actually waiting for those tests, which were supposed to come in this week. They're coming in hopefully shortly because they want to be able to get the test result immediately if they're going to do the oper, you know, the operation, the procedure on the person.
But that isn't, that wasn't part of the core state responsibility. It was healthcare capacity, PPE to handle surge, ability to surge ICU capacity. That's what they have to sign off that they have. And then the gating criteria was that they have the ability to treat all patients without crisis care and robust testing program in place for at-risk healthcare workers, including antibody testing. And so they said two of those three they did have. They had the treat all patients without crisis care and robust testing for at-risk healthcare. But they do, they aren't going to do the antibody testing. So I don't know if we need to write that in their letter. I'm, I'm kind of visualizing a letter from them. And I think we should write it saying, or say, here's what we needed to say. How, do you want to write it in your language and give it to Dr. Absalon tomorrow? And say, don't you think?
Well, I, I think what we committed to was that we would send them our draft plan and that they could, they could comment on it. And I, I think we can certainly suggest in transmitting that to them that, you know, assuming you are in concurrence with this or support it, that we'd like a letter that says boom, boom, boom.
That's fine, yeah, I don't care how we do it, yeah.
Because they actually said they are not going to do their purely elective surgeries starting until May 11th. But that's what's on their plan now. That's what they're, they're aiming for. And they did ask me the question, are we working together with Crook and Jefferson County? That was one of their questions for me.
Well, we really aren't.
But no, but I.
I know, so the answer is what.
Well, you know, I, because Commissioner Semalek and Judge Crawford serve with me on COHC. I'm talking to them all the time about what we're doing. And it's like they're using Madras's numbers, you know, and then they're using Primeville's numbers for their hospitals when they come up to that 210.
But for what we're doing here, I don't think it matters whether we're working with them. We're putting a plan in for Deschutes County.
Right.
So Jefferson and Crook are probably putting theirs in, right? I mean, I don't know.
Yes, they are.
I actually don't know what they're doing.
No, they are working on a plan right now because they got the Harney County plan. So they are, and I know Jefferson is working on it too. But also remember, Harney County talked about if their healthcare system is overwhelmed, they come to St. Charles. So St. Charles knows that they are the, as I say, the five-star hotel hospital of our region. And, you know, there is that pressure, they're, they're aware of it. They have to, you know, if they need to pick it up, they'll, you know, that's where people will go.
Yeah, they know that. Yeah. I wonder if when they were saying, are you working with them? They're saying, is what we're planning related to them? Which I guess that's, I don't wonder why they were asking that? If it was part of the criteria for a, a letter from them or just a.
That was their, actually their last question to me.
What'd you learn, Tony?
So, yeah, they're, I, same conclusion, you know, they, they think they're generally ready. They want to see this plan. They're ready to be a partner in this. There may be some spots where, you know, supplies or testing supplies or testing throughput that are the, you know, the, the reasons we can't proceed right now. But it was in preparation or planning from their point of view. So I kind of came to the same conclusion. It was good to talk to them. They, they're ready to, yeah, review what we have and see what we, we need to do to get open.
Do you think, either of you think we can get a letter from them this week?
How soon can we get them our plan?
Do you want to see it first?
Yeah, we need, we need to have them sit down with the plan. You know, they probably, like, my thought is it'd be good to, you know, sit in an office with them or, you know, a couple of them or something and just kind of figure it out, make sure there's, you know, is there any other questions? Do you have any thoughts? That kind of thing.
So we, can we get it to them by Friday?
I think we can get it to them tomorrow, couldn't we?
Tomorrow?
Minus the sector stuff.
Yeah, we could send them what we have today. I mean.
Yeah.
We're going to keep updating.
Yep, it's, it's a living document.
Whatever you got, yeah.
Breathing and living.
And we've been providing them with drafts as we've been going through at, at, you know, my counterparts' requests, so.
Good.
Okay.
Well, at some point, I think we have to give them an ask. You know, dear Dr., you know.
Dear Dr. Absalon.
And Mr. Sluka, here's our plan as we intend to give it to the governor. We're working on the sector stuff. We need a letter from you saying the following. Can we get that?
Yeah, I think I'm clear. I think they committed to us that they would write a letter. They committed that they would summarize their efforts on surge capacity and PPE and, and, you know, all the things that they're doing in terms of tracking the numbers and reporting and that they would also then review our plan and give us their comments, which we can suggest, you know, that if, I mean, they didn't seem at all to me unsupportive of submitting a reopening plan to the state. You know, obviously, they, they, you know, they have their own obligations. But if we can, you know, move forward in this and say that, you know, these kinds of words from our local medical health system would be ideal in, in presenting our case to the state for reopening authorization. I think that's certainly.
And then offer to sit down with them if they want to go over anything. I, my only concern was I don't know if they're ready to do it this week. Because we, they don't have the same urgency about, you know, they don't have business people telling them.
No, they do have an urgency. They have, they have a huge number of people that are not working. They have a lot of empty beds in their hospital. And 13.1 million only lasted for six days. So they do have an urgency, even with all the money that's.
Did you feel that yesterday? I didn't feel any of that. I didn't feel about getting the economy reopened. I didn't feel any urgency. I, they were still, they literally said, well, we're going to have a pretty good idea on our PPE by Friday, we think. We've, we're still working on that. And it didn't seem like we're talking about, can we get this to them today so that we can get a letter tomorrow? Can we, it wasn't in my feeling, so they might have been different. That's why I asked, is if.
Well, as a, a person that understands all the medical complications that we've done for the past, what, six weeks, not doing quote unquote elective surgeries, there are going to be so many bad things that are going to come out of that.
I get that, I agree with that.
No, but I mean, I think they get it, well, they get it.
Yeah, but I, I don't, you know.
No, they have to get it because their liability insurance, if they, if people find out that, you know, how really bad it is for them, you know, doctors pay incredible amounts of liability insurance and it's going to be tested. So that's, that's the healthcare.
Well, if we could get this draft pretty well down to the final thing, I'll help you with the cover letter in the morning. I could come in if you want somebody else.
She did a new one.
Not to the governor, but to the, to the hospital.
Oh.
To the one that goes to the hospital. I was just thinking of something we need that says what we just asked them to do, what we're asking them to do. One thing that I think's still missing from our plan is the fact that we still haven't addressed the gating criteria.
It's on our letter in red.
Well, you'll notice other people have it in their plan, so that's why I'm bringing it up. If you look at Harney County, they literally check off each gating criteria. And I don't know if it's right or not, but I just wonder if we should do that.
Aren't those the three that are listed on page two?
Yeah.
That we then have full sections on?
No.
No?
No, that's the, those are the preparedness areas. The gating are the issue of downward trajectory of influenza-like illnesses, COVID-like illnesses, documented cases, and hospitals treat all patients without crisis care and robust testing for at-risk healthcare workers, including antibody. That's the gating criteria. So there's, so that's the first kind of predicate. And then the second one is us having this plan for these things, the preparedness areas. Here, I've got it here on a, this is a sheet we got from Annette Levy last Thursday. Had them.
The symptoms, the cases, and the hospitals.
Yeah, do you want to look, Tom? Here, take this.
Yeah, no, I've, I've got her things there. So we've got.
Well, they're listed on here, but I'm just saying we don't have anything saying we've met the grading, gating criteria. Here's a chart showing our downward trend on cases. And I just noticed other counties have addressed, put it right on their, so it seems like we should have a page that says that. You know what I'm talking about, this page.
It's hard to have a downward trend when you have, you go up to four and you go down to zero.
Well, in that, but in the one that we got, the, the rolling average, they are, it still is downward. If they'll count that. I mean, this is still downward over 14 days.
And we could make a statement that, you know, we feel like we've got minimal cases. Yes, we saw measurable cases. We have that chart. But we're still talking about very minimal cases relative to the total population.
Right.
And, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, from, from 14 days ago on the 10th, or whatever it is, no, the 13th, to the 27th, it's gone from 2.2 cases to 1.5, even with the uptake.
My point is that could be so far in the noise relative to our population. You know, we don't have any deaths. We've got, we've had, what, five maximum in one day period?
In one day.
And testing is ramping up and we're still seeing low numbers. So I mean, just, we can, and that's today. We could stay that as, at any point in time because tomorrow could be worse. So.
We need to get it in immediately.
It's always tricky to say, make a bold statement because it could change tomorrow.
Right. That's why, that's why we need to get it in because right now we can say a bold statement. Honestly.
Well, but we don't want to set ourselves up for a upward trajectory either. I mean, that's the goal.
Well, as the governor acknowledged, Marion County has a serious problem with mortality, with the mortality. What are, aren't they number two in the state?
I think they had nine cases yesterday or something like that.
Well. No, but I mean, looking at deaths, they're number two, or they were.
All right, well, good.
Well, and we could, yeah, so gating criteria might need.
Do you see what I'm asking about, Tom?
Yeah, it's that one page that we need to address in here somewhere.
Yeah.
It could be pretty simple, Whitney, don't you think?
So hospital capacity, which is the third gating criteria, is talked about on page four. There's a, along with PPE supplies. So in that, and we'll also presumably get a, or hopefully get a letter from St. Charles that reinforces that. The first two gating criteria have to do with declining numbers in both symptoms and cases. So we certainly talked about that in our briefings the last few weeks. But I, you're right, there, I don't see language in here that talks specifically about declining numbers. The, you know, we've, and George again brought it up this morning. We've got the graph that shows the, the declining average, you know, in new cases per day, which does, you know, show a downward trend.
Looks like he's showing.
Yeah, that one.
And I remember that Justin Saville said the week before that they'd had zero flu cases, you know, at least with some at BMC. So I don't know what the.
Well, I didn't understand whether we had to meet all three of those criteria, declining flu, declining symptoms, and declining cases, or if you could meet cases and that covers the other two. Or I, when Annette presented it to us, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask, but.
Cases says or, downward trajectory or downward trajectory of positive cases as a percent of total cases within a 14.
Right.
So that's an or.
There's an or there, but what about one and two? Are they ors also, or?
No, it says, for symptoms, it says and.
Well, that's, this is what she gave us last Thursday. Maybe we need to find out.
Okay.
I don't know how we find out whether we have to prove all three. My concern, you know, is you watch this national stuff and all the states that are just doing this, the governors are just doing it statewide. I could see this. I could see this not ending up being a county-by-county thing, but the governor here doing, there's a lot of pressure from the president and the administration to get governors to do it in the states, not, not at this small level. So it's going to be, by the time we get done with it, we may or may not still be useful in my mind.
This is good for everybody, business owners, citizens, to kind of think through what is this.
Yeah, yeah.
But I agree with you. Tomorrow could look very different. I agree.
So.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I think we, we call out gating criteria just like we do the preparedness criteria on the first or second page.
All right.
So we're just going to have to add that gating criteria in there. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we good?
We've got direction, I think.
We're to be done.
Okay. So are we to go upstairs then for an executive session?
I think that's up to you. We can turn everything off here if you'd rather just stay where you are.
Okay. It'd be easier.
Is that, was that just for Dave or were you going to do?
It looks like it's for Dave.
Okay.
That's the only thing I see on here.
I, I did have a couple of, sent you a notes on a couple of other items that we can defer if you prefer. There was the one on the audit committee recommendation, the one on Vet, Veterans Village. And I was going to give you a heads up on the, this year's fair. So I'm happy to do.
I'm available for a while yet.
Why don't we do those now, real quick?
Yeah.
Okay.
On Veterans Village, appreciate you sending on the memos and the updates. But, you know, to me, until the city has their meeting, we, I mean, it seemed like we're being asked to write a letter to support the program when we've really been on hold till we hear what the city is going to do because it'll determine how much we need to do. So I, that was my short thought about how we respond to, it sounded like Eric or somebody else asked us to do that, who, the letter.
Well, Eric's asking for the letter in that note he sent yesterday. And, you know, my initial thinking was similar in that this is, you know, everything's been delayed, you know, that we had understood the city was going to have a conversation on the middle of April. That would have kind of provided us some indication of where they are and that we were going to play off that. That's been postponed into May. So it was basically just to say we're, we're probably not ready for that yet, that we're doing, you know, some vetting with the city directly to kind of see where they are. So I'm happy to write him back and just say that. I can, I can send a draft to you before I send it, if you'd prefer, just to kind of see what I, what it looks like.
So we were asked to write a letter that's supposed to be done by May 7th?
No, we were asked to write a letter, but there wasn't a deadline.
No, there was a deadline on my letter. It said May 7th. They wanted the letter back by May 7th. And it does have the funding, you know, where it's, it looks, it's, it's not clear.
Note I got from Eric Tobiason yesterday didn't have a deadline, but maybe you, you had a different one or a different note, but.
It was someone from Jbar J had written me the letter.
That's right. It was a Jbar J.
It was a Jbar J Sherry or something?
Which was interesting because I don't know that they've been at the meetings we've been at.
Steph, no, it wasn't Stephanie.
It wasn't Stephanie. It was somebody else.
It was a Sherry, I believe.
But I, I think it was kind of the same spirit of things, though, as they wanted us to commit to something. And I think we're, Eric knows we're waiting. I mean, I, I think they're just trying to get it off the dime. So.
Okay.
I think I just contacted him and said, we need, give us a couple more weeks. We're really waiting for the city.
Sharon, is this meeting being recorded still? Thank you very much for that clarification.
Because I, I'm still supportive of it, but I see some obstacles and I, I guess need to clear up who's doing what. That's how I feel. How's everybody else feel?
Yeah, everything's moving right now. The world's very dynamic. Probably not right now since it's time to commit to land use and start a big process, especially with the commitments we, we know that might be required, like punch it through a road and utilities expenses. So there's a lot of big things there. So, yeah, it's not time to proceed.
Okay. You think that too?
Honestly, yes. You know, I, did I tell you that, somebody said we have like possibly 29,000 unemployed people between Ben and Redmond? They're going to have that on the news tonight.
29,000?
29,000, 30% of our workforce. That was, that was, yeah, Channel C21 is going to have that on the news tonight. I know. It was awful. Greg said he wasn't surprised, but I thought it was frightening.
So next thing on the fair, real quick. So the Fair and Expo Board is having a meeting with the Fair Association next week on the 7th, where I mentioned at one point, you know, perhaps that being a three-way meeting. The Fair and Expo Board would, would like to actually have a discussion among themselves and then, so they are able to provide a recommendation to you, the Board of Commissioners, which they would propose to do the following week, which would be at your meeting, if you're holding to the Wednesdays, would be on, I believe, the 13th, whatever that Wednesday is in the second week in May. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that, make sure that, that you're okay with that timeframe. And this, again, has to do with what the 2020 Fair, annual Deschutes County Fair, might look like.
Just, you know, for guidance, I mean, they can come back with what they think. I'm really reluctant to cancel it this early. I mean, I, maybe we get into June or, or, or May sometime further in. But when I heard that the Summer Music Festival is canceling in September, I was like.
It was, it's actually an August event. I looked it up. But still, they canceled it. They haven't canceled the Cheyenne for Tier Days. They did count in July, but they did cancel the Calgary Stampede in Canada in July. So I know, it's, it's really sad.
Well, every piece of this hurts us a little more.
I know.
As communities. And so if we're able to open our buildings Monday, which is May 3rd, I'm not sure we should, you know, I, I'm not in a hurry to cancel something that's, you know, a couple of months later yet. I guess I'm like, I'm holding out hope that we can do some of these activities. They're so important to our whole community and every time, everything we're canceling is hurting us.
Sisters Quilt Festival, I mean, I know they bring in people from all over the world, but it's such a, it's, it's our whole community. So, and that's another July.
And I appreciate that. And I, I don't know that they're lining up to demand that it be canceled. I think they're trying to be thoughtful on how it, how it might happen and still accomplish the, you know, some of the both protocols that have been, been, you know, we've been adjusting to in terms of distancing and, and all that sort of thing for the protection of both the participants and the fairgoers and whether the fairgoers would, you know, want to come, given, you know, just kind of where we are or might be. And so those are the things that they're kind of chewing on, mulling with, over in, in order to be able to proceed. We do have some lead time that is necessary in terms of the contracts for, you know, different pieces of the fair, for the entertainment, for the rodeo, for the carnival, those sorts of things that we, you know, we really need to make a decision on at some point in advance of, you know, the, you know, a few weeks in, in front of the fair. So that's, that's kind of what they're operating under. But, so again, they, I'm not, I'm not suggesting this is what it looks like or this is what the recommendation will be. And I appreciate the feedback that you've said today and I'm, and I will certainly pass that on. But that's, that's just what they're, they like in terms of a sequence to communicate with you on where their thoughts are.
Well, you know, one of the things that's going to be interesting is whether, if it turns out there's other studies that meet, that match what Stanford and USC study and the New York are, which is that 15% of the people have already had coronavirus and didn't have any symptoms. And that puts things like mortality rate down like the flu with regard to the, who it impacts. Are we, is all of this going to, you know, all these things we've been doing going to go on? Are people going to feel that they need it to go on as our policymakers, et cetera? Because it's, we went into this with the, you know, with these projections of how many people would die and how many, you know, how many cases there would be. Now, if it's turned out that it isn't, you know, which is what we're hearing some of, I don't know. Big topic.
Yes. And the, what we're really going to be facing is going to be a lot worse. With already seeing domestic violence, all that is not good.
Okay. And the only other thing was on the, unless there are other.
I just, I'd like to request maybe an executive session on properties, just to kind of compare notes, just some things that we've heard around in the background or whatever. So just a request, if we can get to that, just during executive session today.
Well, I've.
Nothing specific, just some of the topics that we've all done.
Redmond tomorrow to do the tours of those property. Have you already done that? Okay, so I'm going tomorrow.
Okay.
If we, yeah, an executive session is the appropriate place to talk about it.
Okay. All right. Anything else in regular session?
Yeah, the only other thing was that, that thing on the audit committee. So if you, if you all had a chance to see that, and again, we don't have to do that today, if you'd like to punt it, there's nothing urgent, but it had to do with who gets appointed to the Investment Advisory Committee. You, you've always, since I've been here, you've picked one of you three to be on it, which works fine. David pointed out in his audit of the Treasury that technically, you know, per the order that was passed back in 95 when the Investment Advisory Committee was set up, that it says that the Budget Committee shall select one of its own to serve on the Investment Advisory Committee, which means the three of you plus the three citizen members, and it could be any one of those six. So if you'd rather just kind of keep it among you three, that's, you know, certainly fine. I, you know, talk to Dave, we probably would just do a modified order, just to, you know, make everything proper and, you know, kind of in, in line. That's one of those things that auditors, you know, they see a tweak in a practice that doesn't align with it, they point it out. So to, and since the board created that order in the first place, you, the current board, have every ability to modify it and just.
This is the Investment Advisory Committee. It's a group of folks providing feedback and input to our treasurer slash finance director, Greg Munn. I have been involved the whole time I've been in office, so we have not rotated this in many years now.
So, does that mean you've been on it for how many years then?
Nine years.
Oh, nine years.
Okay, I'd be happy with just rotating it. I mean, I'd be interested in being on it at some point.
Oh, yeah, no. And the question is, would we have this discussion amongst the three of us or the six of us as a budget committee? Because I'm not saying I have to be on it. I've enjoyed it. We haven't met very much over the years. Greg Munn's used it as a good tool, you know, for him to get up to speed and talking to folks in the finance industry, learning about interest rates and trying to look over the horizon is really what you're trying to do because you don't know what the world's going to happen. But, yeah, I'm not opposed to handing the seat off at all. Would we discuss it at the Budget Committee instead of between the three of us for the appointment? I'd support the Budget Committee just because, I mean, you know, Bill Anderson and, and the history of Mike Meyer and these guys, they're all good inputs too, so. I support bringing it to the Budget Committee for, for a bit, for an item this year.
Okay, when is the Budget Committee meeting? What day or?
Hearings are the week, the holiday week at the end of May.
After Memorial?
Yeah, the week following Memorial Day.
Yeah, it's a meeting quarterly or less, you know, so it's probably three meetings a year, not even four.
Okay. All right, so.
Are you?
We can do it then, can't we?
If, yeah, that's the question, if you want to bring it to the Budget Committee or keep it among you three. I think Tony's suggesting the Budget Committee and I'm looking for whether you two agree or would like to keep it among yourself.
They'll probably want one of us to do it, but I, you know, if it's, that's how it was written up 25 years ago, then I guess we'll do it.
Well, yeah, I guess the reason I like having a commissioner on is because we actually meet every week and we talk to each other and stuff. We don't see the budget. If a Budget Committee person's on there, that'd be great, but we only see him a couple of times a year, so it doesn't really.
And we have our financials every month and we see what's going on.
Might be another option where you continue to appoint one of you three and then offer it up if you want another member, one of the citizen members of the Budget Committee could join you two if they were interested.
Yeah, yeah, there's probably no reason that there couldn't be another appoint, I mean, maybe not official appointment, but a invitation.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll bring it back for the Budget Committee.
All right, so now we're adjourning our regular meeting? Thank you, Sharon.